Mr. Lovero?
Yes.
Ms. Bari?
Yes.
Mr. Shiktel? Mr. Pankov?
Yes.
Mr. Beg?
Yes.
Ms. Applegate? Committeewoman Mandal?
Councilwoman Andrea, yes.
Sorry.
Mayor Morata?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hobermann?
Here.
Chairman Carr?
Here. I was to read the notice first, and I apologize for that, so I'll read it now. This is advised notice of time, date, location, extent known, agenda. The subject meeting was primarily posted to the public place reserve for such similar announcements on August 15, 2022, transmitted to the Times, the Princeton packet, and West Windsor Plainsboro News, August 15, 2022, followed the county clerk on August 15, 2022. We've already called it all. So heading to the first item consent agenda minutes for June 8. What's any comments, amendments, changes to the June 8, 2022 minutes?
Okay, on page five.
Yep.
I just wanted to add that in where it says near waste field, and it says that the only time that the generator is going to run is if there's an emergency. I think we should add at the end of that and for required testing.
Yeah, you, I totally agree because I have the same comment.
Okay. And then down there where it says Mr. Hobermann, sorry, I should have left it for you. It says improvement coverage, it should be impervious coverage. At the second line. Impervious.
Sam, do we, do we call an improvement coverage or impervious coverage?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You want to call it improvement?
Okay.
Yeah.
No change on that.
No change, okay. All right, because it was called impervious elsewhere. All right. Thank you.
You have the added line for during periodic scheduled testing above there. The paragraph above there, Andrea mentioned after the word emergency, we need to add something that says during periodic scheduled testing and periodic scheduled testing.
Yeah, that's fine, thank you.
Mike, could I swear Rob in and Jotica also? I think she's already been sworn, but I want to swear Rob in as the alternative one and then Jotica as a class two member of the board.
Sure.
Okay. Jotica, why don't we start with you?
I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people. I do further solemnly swear that I would faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the office of member two, member class two of the planning board according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
And Rob, another copy of yours?
I just gave my original.
I did them all there, there? Yeah, and just raise your right hand if you could. I, Robert Lovero, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people. I do saw, excuse me, I do further solemnly swear that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all of the duties of the office of alternate one on the planning board according to the best of my ability. So help me God.
Congratulations.
Welcome both of you.
Okay. Any other amendment, comments, changes to the, to the June 8 minutes?
I have something on page two. It's under Nalufur Narandran. The first sentence reads, Ms. Narandran commented about the public comment process. Princeton Junction was ranked as the best place, the best places. I think you want to put as among the best places. And the only other thing I have is in the form of a question is, I guess Alan, is Alan here? No, okay. On page three, under liaison reports, affordable housing committee, it says, "An energy efficiency program in the township has been rather successful. As of June 2021, no progress had been made. As of May 5, 2021, at least 29 of 37 eligible homes were completed with an average expenditure of 6,000 per unit." I just wonder if that's accurate. That not, that not, it was not, it was not my impression that nobody had signed up for this prior to June 2021. Sam, do you have any information on that? That just doesn't seem right. Really? Oh, okay. Okay. Why don't we leave it? And that's, that's it.
Okay, anybody else? I'll entertain a motion regarding the minutes.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman of June 8, 2022 is amended.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion by Simon. Seconded by Curtis. Can I have a vote, please?
Oh, yeah, first one, it's fine.
Yes, please. Well, for, only for those eligible to vote for these minutes.
Mr. Lovero?
Yes.
Mr. Pankov?
Yes.
Mr. Beg?
Yes.
Ms. Applegate? Councilwoman Mandal?
Yes.
Mayor Morata?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hobermann?
Yes.
Chairman Carr?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up is the minutes from July 13, 2022. Do I hear, are there any amendments, changes?
I have a correction. The first sentence under reorganization, age one. It should read this way. Attorney Mueller swore in Mr. Hobermann as a class four member. He was formerly a class two member.
Right, exactly.
No, I'm class four now.
Yeah, no, no. Yeah, Curtis is correct. Right, Curtis is correct.
Jotica's the class two member.
Okay, it's just reversed.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have several on page three, under conditions outlined by Mr. Mueller.
I have the same thing, so you can go ahead.
Okay, the applicant will submit a plan. Takeout and would be at resolution takeout of, so it would be submit a plan at resolution compliance, et cetera. Then going down to during the, the sentence that starts with during the resolution of compliance, it should simply read during, take out the resolution, take out of, and we have compliance, it would say during resolution, compliance, comma. And then the next sentence, any conditions of prior approval that have not been satisfied during resolution, take out the of, so we just say resolution compliance. Okay, and that's all I have.
Anybody else? I have to add the word township.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
We're down on page three.
Right.
So can you repeat that and see the microphone?
That's, Mike.
Page three?
Page three, on during the resolution, that sentence, the end, it says however else the township staff wants documentation. You see it?
Which paragraph?
Under conditions outlined by the attorney, it's the one, two, three, fifth sentence. During the resolution.
During the resolution of compliance.
The applicant will provide the hours of the cafe and will document that with that, with a note on the plans or however else the township staff wants documentation.
Thank you.
And I had a question on page two. Under the application, it addresses, the first sentence, it addresses site plan approval to construct a condominium unit IL. Should we be indicating individual living instead of just IL?
I think, I think so, because I didn't know what it was originally.
I didn't either. And then it also is the same thing in the next to the last sentence, con closures on the AL and IL units.
Yeah.
Sister living and individual.
And pickleball is one word.
Yeah, that's Cindy.
Yes, thank you.
Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the June 13, 2022 minutes.
Still moved.
Second.
Jotica, and seconded by Sue. Can you please call the roll? For those eligible to vote.
Mr. Lovero?
Yes.
Ms. Bari?
Yes.
Mr. Beg?
Yes.
Ms. Applegate?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mandal?
Yes.
Mayor Morata?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hobermann?
Yes.
Chairman Carr?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up is July 27, 2022 minutes. Any amendments, changes, comments, questions?
I have two things. Under the application Carnegie Center West Corman Suites. I think the, I think that first sentence is not actually a sentence. The first line is fine, the second line, where it says within Carnegie Center West and take, take out the comma, and then and take out is, known as building eight oh one, then add is proposed. See where I am, Cindy?
Carnegie Center West comma and is proposed is building eight oh one.
No, take out the, the comma after Carnegie Center West. And known, and just take out the is, and known as building eight oh one is, add is proposed. And then, let me just ask this, in terms of the witnesses for the Corman, which are listed on the top of page two, one of them, the architect is listed as Ryan Bruce. I thought it was Brian Bruce. Somebody know one way or the other? No, Sam?
But I think it's RA, not LA. He's a registered architect, not a landscape architect.
Oh, okay. Oh, Sam, do you have any idea whether the landscape architect for Corman is Ryan Bruce or Brian Bruce? Oh, I'm sorry.
Jerry, I think it is Ryan Bruce based on a very quick Google search that I can't tell you is 100% accurate, but I'm seeing Ryan Bruce as LinkedIn for a senior associate.
Okay, that's fine. All right, thank you. Thanks, Steve. And then going on, after the recess, the third paragraph. Mr. Lovero made a motion to approve the proposed amendment number six, add for preliminary A approval and to grant. And then take out the for after that. So we would read, Mr. Lovero made a motion to approve the proposed amendment number six, that the preliminary A approval and to grant preliminary and final subdivision approval, the two variances, both relating to Route One setback. I would just say that, I would take out the, I would take out after the the numerous whole series of, and just have the design waivers and several submission waivers decided by Attorney Mueller and conditions, and then take out comma requirements and variances, just on conditions requested by the West Winds Township Planning Board. Want me to go back over that? Yeah, okay, let me start with that paragraph. Mr. Lovero made a motion to approve the proposed amendment number six, add to the preliminary A approval and to grant, take out the for after that, and then continue preliminary, preliminary and final. And then take out after final, take out the and, so it would read and preliminary and final subdivision approval. So it would be preliminary and final site plan and subdivision approval. Now, let me just start again. Mr. Lovero made a motion to approve the proposed amendment number six for the preliminary A approval and to grant preliminary and final site plan and subdivision approval, then the two variances, both relating to the Route One setback. The, take out numerous whole series of, it just, it'll read the design waivers and several submission waivers decided by Attorney Mueller and conditions, take out comma requirements and variances. So we just read, and conditions requested by the West Winds Township Planning Board, seconded by Ms. Berry. Okay?
I'll touch that on the page.
And I could give this to you.
Okay. That would be wonderful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any other changes?
That's it, for me.
No. I'll entertain a motion to approve the July 27 minute. Still move?
Second.
Okay. I, Anis, and seconded by Andrea. Please call the roll for those eligible to vote.
First by Andrea and second by?
No.
No.
Motion by Anis and seconded by Andrea.
Thank you.
Mr. Lovero?
Yes.
Ms. Bari?
Yes.
Mr. Beg?
Yes.
Ms. Applegate?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mandal?
Yes.
Mayor Morata?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hobermann?
Yes.
Chairman Carr?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay. And the next up is the resolution. TB 21-12, rise in Hen's Neck Emergency Generator minus site plan additional use in bulk variance, block six, block 72, 138 Washington Grove.
I don't want to do that planning board resolution, which is item B first.
You skipped the planning board.
Yes, I'm sorry that, I dropped that. Getting ahead of myself here. Planning Board Resolution 2022 R-04, objecting to New Jersey Assembly Bill 1294, New Jersey Senate Bill S-Q103, undermining local planning in the zone, and Jerry, please, you know, enumerate what's going on there.
Yeah, it's pretty extraordinary legislation, and Dave, you jump in when you would like. That has been proposed by Assemblyman Greenwald in the Assembly, where there's parallel legislation in the South. And what it provides is that any, basically, office and commercial development of at least 150,000 square feet. I'm sorry, 50,000 square feet of, for the office park or retail center of at least 15,000 square feet. If either of them have a vacancy rate 40%, basically, that's, is automatically rezoned to a mixed use residential and commercial development. If the area is in the designated area under the statute, and we would be because it's it's in planning, we're in planning, we're in planning area two, correct, Sam? Or correct, David? We're in planning area two, correct?
Planning area one, planning area two, or as a designated center, or within one mile of transit, or a central business district.
Right, and we're in planning area two.
Oh, I mean, so, yeah, I'm sorry.
Planning area four also.
Okay, okay, right. And within a mile of the, of the train station, anyway. In that case, they can go ahead and basically either tear down the, or renovate the existing commercial and office and have a combined office, retail, and residential. At least 20% of the units of the residential units have to be affordable. Or they could completely demolish the, the center and rebuild as long as a footprint isn't any bigger. Except in certain circumstances, there's an exception to that. It's when it's necessary, and this is the end of the first paragraph of the memo from Martina, if it's necessary to expand the footprint, manage stormwater through the use of green infrastructure, natural, natural systems, increase tree canopy, and increase street grid connectivity. So it really takes a lot of the power away from municipalities and local governing bodies and ultimately planning and zoning boards. And basically, that's preempted by the legislation. Now, oddly, it says any redevelopment, basically, you don't have the variances or anything like that. You do have to comply with the local bulk standards and other standards that are laid out in the, in the memo. But you have to prove that it's basically, it meets what's the equivalent of the MLUO, negative criteria for variances. That is, there's, as you know, substantial detriment to the public good and the substantial impairment of the intent and purpose of the, of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. As Martine indicates, how you possibly do that, I don't know. By definition, what's being done, if there's a redevelopment, using this statute, it's not consistent with the zone plan and zoning ordinance. It's, it's by definition inconsistent with it. So I don't know how you deal with this. The League of Municipalities has sent a letter to the legislature opposing this and also has done a model resolution, which Martina basically marked up and submitted as exhibit B, exhibit A being the legislation itself, and B being the resolution, which I think is self-explanatory, and it says basically, we're opposed to this. We want to maintain control ourselves over our local land use decisions. And in any event, we don't know how you would even implement this. Where this is going to go at the assembly level, I don't know. This has been around for a while. It looks like it was dead, it kind of, like Freddy Krueger, it kind of revived itself and came out of the grave. But I'm not, the league isn't really convinced that it's really going to go anywhere. The, the speaker of the, the assembly, Cochlin, is, Coughlin, is opposed to this. So I think it's very questionable whether this is going to go anywhere. But at least the thought was at the administrative level, and we were tasked with doing this, was that we should do a statement that we could submit to the, to the assembly in the House, at the assembly in the Senate, opposing this legislation, and we would do it by virtue of adoption of this resolution. Dave, you want to add anything to that?
I think you've really covered all the major points. I have read through the legislation, a lot of it is confusing and slightly ambiguous to me. For example, you know, we just went over where this would be permitted, and one of the things that they identify is within one mile of a central business district, but they don't really identify what's a central business district.
Right.
They also permit this as a permitted use unless there's any expansion of the building footprint. So does that mean where, you know, this is a, would not be a permitted use if the building gets expanded by 50 square feet? It's all of a sudden a use variance? There's a lot of ambiguity behind it.
Exactly. And you can make exceptions where you can't expand the footprint, which is for stormwater management through the use of green infrastructure and then increases in the tree canopy.
That was confusing to me too. How does expanding a building increase tree canopy?
Well, it wouldn't be that. It's, if you expand the tree canopy, I, somehow you can expand the footprint of the building. It doesn't say how much you can do it, and it's just kind of an odd concept.
So I appreciate the, I appreciate the sentiment of trying to reutilize existing infrastructure and focusing on smart growth. I think the legislature has already promoted that through recent amendments to the local redevelopment and housing law that allows municipalities to target underutilized office spaces as well.
Right.
This, I think, is not crafted in a way that makes a lot of sense for practical zoning interpretation.
Yeah.
The content of the Assemblyman's proposal notwithstanding, I find this very repulsive in terms of how land use is done in the state of New Jersey.
Exactly.
I do not want the legislature at either level in Trenton to tell us this is how you're going to have an area done. Or that we, we, we take ownership of, of how we do land use in this township, and I don't want the state telling us how we're supposed to do land use.
One of the things, and one of the things I would also be concerned about this is that it establishes an affordable housing set aside rate that's actually lower than what West Winds.
Yeah, exactly. And that's, that's true at all.
To Curtis' point, one of the things that we really try to do is emphasize a higher affordable housing set aside than what would otherwise be typically interpreted as required in this ordinance. So there's.
And, you know, we'll talk about ambiguity, there's an ambiguity there too, because it says at least 20%, which was not in the original legislation. But what does that mean? Is that the choice of the developer? Is that a choice that can be imposed upon a developer? It's certainly completely unclear.
Exactly. It's a little bit of a, what I call Frankenstein document.
Yeah, it is. And then just to follow up on what Curtis was saying, and I think he's absolutely right.
I, I, I agree with Curtis. It's not the details, it's not whether it's a footprint or 20 feet more than a footprint. Basically, what this is, I don't care if that was all perfect. Basically, what that's saying is, hey, there's a strip mall here, and you've now lost your right to zone it. You've lost your right what to say it's supposed to be in your master plan. Whatever you, you want to do with your town, if you wanted to redevelop, and you've lost all that, that the builder or, or has the right to come in and say, hey, I want to put residential here, which is basically what he's going to try to do with the mixed use as much as possible. And if you really look at this from, even from another point of view, I think there's something in there that says he's got to have something like a 40% rate of vacancy, if I remember correctly. And if you remember anything about when condos first came up and stuff like that, I can just see, instead of somebody trying to make their mall and their retail work, them upping the price and doing whatever they can to make enough people move out so that they can now come and make more money off of the land regardless of the zoning. So the, the detail, the, the dotting of the line, whether or not the, the tree canopy is left or right, or they put a solar panel on top, I don't care if they put a thousand car chargers on it. It still means, and, and, and you know how dear to my heart that is? Basically, it's, it's taking away local right to know, to have our own master plan and our own zoning for, for a piece, for land.
And, and just to reiterate too, I mentioned this, that the local redevelopment and housing law was amended to identify the discontinuance of the use of a building or buildings previously used for commercial, retail, shopping malls or plazas, office parks, manufacturing, or industrial purposes, the abandonment of such building or building, significant vacancies of such building or buildings for at least two consecutive years. And it goes on. That was a recent, more recent amendment. We actually applied that to the SRI site, but what that allows us to do is take a more localized approach
Right, exactly.
to redevelopment as opposed to a, for lack of a better phrase, one size fits all.
Yeah, that's exactly right. The only thing I was going to add to what Curtis and Andrea was saying is, it's not only completely inconsistent with the way land use works in New Jersey, but, but there's a significant role for the public in, in this. For example, during the master planning process, there's a formal master plan hearing. The public has a right to be heard. I mean, that's out, basically, public participation is out the window. There's no variances that are necessary. If somebody wants to come in and do something and they need a variance, we know there has to be a formal application, hearing on the application, the public. The public, again, has a right to be heard, and you don't have any of that. So I, I agree with what everybody's saying.
I don't understand why one, two, three, four districts can dictate all of New Jersey, what's going on. That's number one. Number two, if they're so, you know, bent on doing this, just do it in Burlington, Camden, Bergen, and say Hudson, Essex, and Morris Counties, and just leave it there. They don't have to hit to all the other counties.
Right.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Doesn't make any sense to me.
No, it doesn't.
Or they could just do their own redevelopment, or they can do variances if that's what they want to do. There's, there's a lot of process for towns to make these changes right now.
You don't need to, you know, predict things. Oh, we get public comment on this one?
Yeah.
Sure, uh, I'll open it to public comment.
Allison Miller, forty-one, Windsor Drive. I agree with everything that everybody has said. This is absolutely ridiculous legislation, and it would undermine the master plan, uh, process. It would undermine the ability to control zoning, and it, it would lead to, uh, interpretation chaos. So I, I thoroughly, uh, agree with your passing this resolution, and I, I would urge, uh, our councilwoman here to take it to the council and have the council pass it as well.
Yeah, I think the council would also be interested in, in supporting the defeat of, of this particular law. So, um, we will look at that.
Thank you.
Thank, and, and-
Um, anybody else from the public board like to talk regarding this resolution? Please step up. You're good, you agree? John Church agrees. Um, okay. Close, close this part to the public, and I'll take a-
Can I, can I make a couple of little fixes? Um, I kind of don't like the word peculiar knowledge. Um, it just hits, hits me the wrong way with the, using the word peculiar, and I know, and it's, um, in the first, first sentence.
The reason that's in, that, that's fine changing it. I mean, that's actually language used in the case, but, uh-
Uh, if it's a-
The legal use of the word peculiar.
No, it's, it's, it's a layman's, a layperson's use, so if you want to change it, it's certainly fine.
I mean, if, if it's not necessary, I'd like to change it. If it's going to, change the impact, could we just say unique knowledge? Um, and I guess that's in the first, second, and third whereas's. Um, and then the other thing at the last be it further resolved, uh, somebody pointed out to me that some of these, uh, titles are not exactly the way the titles could be, so if those could be fixed. So for instance, Assemblywoman Verena Reynolds Jackson, and Assemblyman Anthony Varelli, and Senator Shirley Turner, uh, just, um, fix, just, uh, fix those titles up so that they, they, um, match. What, and I believe we have it correct in the memo, uh, it's just-
On the very last be it further resolved at the very end.
At the last, uh, sentence, titles of the representative.
Yeah.
Use whatever the current.
Whatever the correct title.
Use the title.
It's an assembly person.
Jerry, could you also, um, put a signature here for Mike and Lisa to sign it, too? Because there's no signature lines for them.
Governor Murphy, everybody else has a first name except for him, we know who he is, but, you know, just consistency.
And, and we might want to swap the order around so it's not Assembly then Senate. I'm not sure how that's usually done. Um, I was trying to remember some of the ones we've done, probably high to low, I guess. I'll take, I'll take from the audience, if you, you go high to low, I'd go high to low.
High to low. Yeah, Senator Jerry, uh, order of, uh, highest office to lowest of Governor Murphy, uh, to lowest, um-
Okay. Yep, good, that's fine. Let me ask an embarrassing question, because we can't come up with an answer over here. Um, what, what's the governor's first name?
Governor.
Is it Phil?
It's what I thought, yeah.
It's Phil.
Phil, 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 Phil.
Thank you.
I, I-
He, he's a politician, so I'm sure he calls himself Phil rather than Philip.
Philip Dunton Murphy. Philip Dunton, D-U-N-T-O-N.
I'm just going to say Governor Phil Murphy.
D-U-N-T-O-N.
Okay, any, any other changes to the resolution? Hearing, seeing and hearing none, I'll take, entertain a motion to approve this rev- uh, resolution.
So, okay. Uh, what's the changes, um-
Changes that have been noted.
Uh, so-
And I'll second. Okay, uh, motion by Andrew, second by Curtis, please call the roll.
Mr. Laverro?
Yes.
Ms. Bari?
Yes.
Mr. Pankoff?
Yes.
Mr. Beg?
Yes.
Ms. Applegate? Councilwoman Mandell?
Yes.
Mayor Murate?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Huberman?
Yes.
Chairman Carr?
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. Okay, next up is-
And thank Martina for bringing this to our attention. Okay, Jerry.
Yeah, well, Sam has been on top, and we've been on top for quite, quite a while.
Okay, next up resolutions, um, PV twenty-one dash twelve Verizon Tensnet Emergency Generator minus site plan, conditional use in both variants, block six, block seventy-two, one thirty-eight Washington Road. Um, Jerry, do you just want to just give a, just a brief description of the resolution?
Yeah, really brief, um, this is a new generator they're putting in that would operate, uh, that they would remove the generator that's inside the building now, and they, they think it's insufficient, as well as other equipment, including noise, pretty noisy equipment on the roof, putting a new generator, um, behind the building. Uh, it will be enclosed in a metal container, and then they'd be landscaping. Uh, and the idea is to ha- have this operate only when there is an emergency, and the, uh, the nine-one-one system will not work. That's really the purpose of it. Um, but it would be generally available for cell phone service, which is what that facility on Washington Road, uh, is for, um, if there are issues with cell phone service. And they needed site plan, minus site plan approval, they needed conditional use approval because it was a, um, a utility, and, um, they needed, uh, a bulk variance, and that's because the, um, improvement coverage went up, um, to thirty-seven point five, uh, five percent, and it permitted twenty percent, and the existing thirty-five percent. So it went up a little bit. And the reason for that was, um, the, the new generator is on a pad. The pad takes a pretty good amount of space. Um, there were questions raised at the hearing, as you might recall, or, well, can't we use some, there's always parking back there. Can't we just use some of the parking for the pad and have less rather than more impervious cover? And the answer was, when there's an emergency, which is really the time that Verizon would be sending people out, they don't need those parking places. So they had to be maintained, um, which is why it, it wound up the way it did. We did have some conditions, they were-
I need to go through more of the conditions.
Yeah, right, exactly.
So I think we got the gist of it. Are there any changes, or anything that anybody wants to amend? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, um, by Simon, second.
Second.
Second by Sue. Roll call, please.
Mr. Laverro?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Pankoff?
Yes.
Ms. Applegate?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mandell?
Yes.
Mayor Murate?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Huberman?
Yes.
Chairman Carr?
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. Um, next resolution is PV twenty-two dash oh-three SW, SEMA Network Inc., minus site plan and C bolt variants, block twenty-five, block twenty-five point oh-one, sixteen seventy-six Old Trenton Road. Jerry, can you please give a brief description of this resolution?
Yeah, this, this is formerly the site of Pep Boys, and it's now, um, Pep Boys has been acquired, and I think something called Advanced Auto Service. Auto parts, uh, I think it's also been acquired.
That's Pep Boys.
That's, uh, that's what I'll watch, you're right, no, you're right.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, this is, so, uh, Pep Boys is now a part of the building that it had occupied completely, and, um, this auto parts is, uh, advanced auto parts is in the other part. Um, and they came in with a package, uh, of, uh, a signage package so that drivers on Route One could identify, uh, what was there. People getting onto the site, which doesn't have access directly from Route One, it's from Evans, um, would be able to basically get within that complex where they needed to go. Um, so there were whole, there was a, a series of signs, uh, that were proposed, and they described it extensive length here. Um, and there were a number of, uh, waivers that were necessary, uh, design waivers. I would point out on page three, uh, on pa- paragraph five, "The applicant seeks signage plan approval," and it says in print, in brackets, eighteen slash nineteen, question mark. It's actually nineteen waivers, um, in order to have the signage package. Uh, the board approved the signage package, um, if there were no conditions, and, um, basically, that was it.
Can I ask a question regarding the address that's listed there? Fifteen seventy-six Old Trenton Road, is that correct? I thought Pep Boys is on US Route One. Where, where you, I'm looking, I see it on-
Should be thirty-five oh-five Brunswick Pike, thirty-five oh-five Brunswick Pike.
It's on the agenda.
Oh.
On the agenda.
Is the agenda wrong and it's correct elsewhere?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, right.
Okay, fine.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Not, not a problem, sorry. Um, okay, any other changes?
I, I assume you're making a change, but they're nineteen, the one that Jerry mentioned.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, nineteen, yep.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve as amended.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Simon.
Second.
Second by Sue, uh, please call the roll.
Mr. Laverro?
Yes.
Mr. Pankoff?
Yes.
Mr. Beg?
Yes.
Ms. Applegate?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mandell?
Yes.
Mayor Murate?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Huberman?
Yes.
Chairman Carr?
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. Next up is PV nineteen dash one-three amended senior living at Bear Creek, amended final major site plan, block thirty-three, block one oh-two, Village Road East and Old Trenton Road. Jerry, please, uh, give us a brief description of this resolution.
Yeah, this had been originally approved as part of the Bear Creek, uh, development way back in nineteen ninety-six. It had been a number of, of amendments to it. This latest one was basically, uh, decrease the size of the, the footprint of the building, uh, increase the, and decrease the impervious cover, um, and to make related, um, infrastructure improvements. Um, and to make it more, to appear more residential in character. Um, the planning board, um, uh, approved it, um, amended final site plan approval, and, um, there are a number of, of conditions, they're fairly standard stuff. Um, and, um, I could go over those if you want. They're on pages eight and nine of the resolution, but they're all self-explanatory. Uh, it does include that the roof has to be solar ready, um, where conduit will be put for the EV charging stations, which I'm sure, um, the, the board will be happy with, and Andrew in particular. Um, then there was, there was a question you might recall, is where the affordable units would be located. There was a plan which showed where they would be located. They came in afterwards and, and, and they said even at that point in time, you know, "We'd like a little flexibility," and we gave it to them in, in condition number C. Um, but the main, the main point from our point of view is they have to be distributed evenly through, uh, the number, evenly through the development. Also, the number of, of two bedrooms would decrease considerably, the number of one bedrooms were increased, and that's basically what the resol- what the approval is all about, and that was failing recently.
Any, uh, questions needed to this resolution? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve PV nineteen dash one-three.
So moved.
Second.
Move by Andrea, second by Anis, please call the roll.
Mr. Laverro?
Yes.
Ms. Bari?
Yes.
Mr. Beg?
Yes.
Ms. Applegate?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mandell?
Yes.
Mayor Murate?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Huberman?
Yes.
Chairman Carr?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, moving right along. Uh, next up, ordinance referral from Town to Council, twenty-two dash nineteen, open space cluster plan development. Um-
I think they, they, they have prepared this list, I think.
Okay.
Yes, I can walk everybody through it. Uh, can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Just making sure, this microphone is a little wobbly, so, guys, tune out, just yell. Uh, good evening, everybody. So tonight we'll be discussing ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash nineteen. Uh, it's an ordinance that is, uh, pertaining to the R dash one C, the RRC District, and Cluster Developments. So just as a little bit of backgrounds, our RRC District is primarily located in the southwestwardly portion of the township. It's also located around Village Road West, North Coast Road, uh, contains a lot of the townships remaining undeveloped and uncommitted open spaces, as well as actively farmed agricultural land. Also contains, uh, a lot of Mercer County agricultural development areas as well. And that zoning district, as we know, establishes a typical lot size for residential dwellings of three and one-third acre. Also pertains to the R dash one C District, that's located primarily within vicinity of Mercer County Lake, Grove Roots Mill Pond in the Millstone River. And again, uh, if you look through a master plan, it notes that that district is comprised of larger vacant pharmacist and preserved properties, also, uh, contains significant amount of green belt as well. Um, and the minimum lot size for that district is one and one-third, I'm sorry, um, yeah, one and two-thirds acre, thank you, Sam. Ordinance also pertains to Cluster Development. So, as is presently written in our ordinance, a Cluster Development is an optional development, um, tracked for pieces of property with over twenty acres in size. So developers have the option presently of subdividing a piece of property in the RRC District or the R one C District that's at least twenty acres in size, and what that Cluster Development allows you to do is reduce your minimum lot size, and whatever is left over is essentially committed as open space. Uh, it doesn't allow you additional lots, so whatever the base density would be that you would be allowed to have, uh, under the RRC District or R one C District, doesn't increase number of lots that you get, it just shrinks those lots. Um, anything that's left over is committed as open space. However, our Cluster Ordinance is also not just an optional element, but it's also required for certain lots as well, and those are lots that have green belt located on them. So if a property in the R one C or RRC District has a green belt on it, uh, you are required to do that Cluster Development. What this ordinance does is that it extends the breadth of that ordinance. So it allows developers to keep that optional element, if it's twenty acres or more, but it's now going to also require a Cluster Development with three new scenarios. On tracks which are joint preserved properties, regardless of your track size, on tracks which are joint properties which are identified preservation by the conservation element, farmland preservation element, or the open space and recreation plan, regardless of track size, or on tracks which are joint properties containing green belt as designated on the conservation element, farmland preservation element, or the open space and recreation plan, again, regardless of track size. Um, in preparing for this meeting, uh, we did consult with some of the township staff as well. I did get some feedback back from Fran Guzik. So what I would like to do is go through the ordinance, address some of the comments and questions that he brought up, because I have a feeling that some board members will, and members of the public will have similar questions as well. Go through that- Go through that, take it bit by bit and if I go through something that a board member has a question on that I don't address with Fran's comments, just speak up and we can address it then. I think, does that seem to make sense as a process? So again, this is ordinance twenty-two, uh, two thousand twenty-two dash nineteen. The first section, uh, amends our open space cluster regulations in two hundred dash one seventy-four. Off the bat, Fran had a question regarding item A one, which begins open space cluster plan development requirements may be applied. He wanted to know if may should be changed to is required because this ordinance is requiring cluster developments. I wouldn't recommend that change because this ordinance technically still allows for developers who have twenty acres in size who's not meeting one of those thresholds to partake in the cluster development. So I would keep that language written as is.
Yeah, I know Dave and I had different points of view on this, just just to give the alternative point of view, which is Francis's point of view. Uh, the reason he put shall in is, I think his thinking was if it's just may, it really conflicts with everything in section two, which is all mandatory. While this is, this is optional. And if you put shall in, um, I think David, that that's basically limited by the language that comes immediately, immediately thereafter be applied in accordance with the provisions of this section. So if a section requires that certain things be done, that's fine. If it, if it basically gives the option to a developer, that's fine also. So I think the shall is fine, but if you want to use may, I mean.
Could we, uh, not to make things too complicated, we could maybe go halfway, may be applied in accordance with the provisions of the section, a modified bulk and area requirement specified in the RRC or R one C district is part four. Includes some sort of language saying unless otherwise required herein or?
That's fine, that's good. Okay, you you'll put that in?
What, where would this not be required?
So if there's a vacant tract in the RRC or R one C district that is at least twenty acres in size and it does not have any green belt on it, it does not join any green belt or any property that's preserved or any property that's identified for preservation. So it's basically a twenty acre piece of property that does not abut any of those types of other features.
What I meant is, is part of this ordinance. It, it sounds like what you just described is outside of anything in this ordinance. Correct? Would, would you just describe as a property that doesn't meet any of these requirements?
That would, yeah, it would not be, be any of these.
Which would be any random piece of property. But if it does, if it is a property meeting these requirements, is there a case where it would not be required to do this?
If it meets one of these requirements identified in two A, B, C, or D, they would be required to do the cluster development.
Okay, so if this entire ordinance is about requiring, do we want to be confusing by saying may?
Well, that's the, that's the thing. So you, through this ordinance, if you have a twenty acre piece of property that does not um, have any green belt on it, that does not abut or join preserved properties or identify or join a property identified for preservation or join a property containing green belt, it's still optional that in that scenario.
So it will be applied, is it? So what you're saying is it will be applied if it meets any of these criteria?
Exactly.
So could we be a little clearer in that?
Yes, yeah, we're, we're, uh, requiring the cluster development in a greater number of scenarios than what currently exists in the ordinance. Right now, it's only required if you have green belt. This ordinance is requiring it if you have green belt on the site or if you're meeting one of those other three scenarios. It would still be an optional development pattern now if if you don't meet those scenarios.
How many properties in West Windsor are like twenty acres and don't have green belt and would be optional, do you know?
About two, I would say two, the Hunter Farm and the Perrine Farm, the Hunter Farm right down on North Post and Village and the Perrine Farm on Southfield Road.
Thank you.
But to get back to Fran's, Jerry's point, I have no issue changing the, the the made a shall, now that I understood what you were, both of you were saying, I have no issue with changing that language.
Okay. And David, um, why don't you explain to the, well, you, you, you're gonna go on, but I assume you'll explain that, that actually the the minimum lot size
Yes.
can be discussed, okay.
Yeah, well, yeah, I'm gonna take it paragraph by paragraph, basically. Fran next had a question on item two B. Uh, again, this is one of the scenarios, so the cluster development will be required on tracks which are joint preserved properties regardless of track size. Fran had questioned whether or not we need a definition for this, if it matters who it's preserved by whom or how, or to add a reference to the three elements used in D. The clarifying language I would propose would be uh, a joint any publicly or privately preserved properties.
That's good.
Fran's next question or comment was in two D, which presently reads on tracks which are joint properties containing green belt as designated on the conservation element, farmland preservation element or the open space and recreation plan element of the master plan, regardless of track size. Uh, Fran points out that green belt is actually not identified in the farmland preservation element. So technically we don't need that reference in there.
Would that be true for C also, David?
Uh, no, because we do identify properties for farmland preservation, I believe, in the farmland preservation element.
Okay.
Uh, and just for the boards, edification, no, edification is not the right word, but we will be beginning work on a new farmland preservation element soon.
Okay. By the way, David, maybe I could advise the board, what's the status of this phase of the council? Has this been introduced?
This was introduced, yes, and now it's the referral.
Okay, and everything that's underlined is edit language, strikeouts of deleted language.
Exactly, yeah, so in the draft ordinance that you see, anything that's read and struck through would be removed from the ordinance and then read and underlined would be added.
Okay.
Just so you're aware, on the chart on the next page, since we got it printout in black and white, it doesn't actually say which of these columns have been added and which ones were there before.
Oh, that's, that gets easier to read at all then, okay.
Unless you get it in color, I'm just saying, so if people just have the ones they got in the packet,
Yeah.
they wouldn't know.
Maybe for the next iteration then we'll italicize as well, that way it'll stand out a little bit more. Or bold, yeah. Fran had a couple of comments regarding this table, which I believe I agree with all the way. One minor one is that he just added a, a label to the table entitled Table A, Open Space Cluster Lot and Bulk Requirements. What we'll do, what I'll do first is address some of the edits that he made in the first row, which begins with zoning district basic permitted lot size. Some of these were typographical, uh, for example, he just touched out the space between the three and one-third in the second column. The third column, which was added, um, presently reads OSC permitted reductions in absent of green belt adjacent to a preserved lot, a lot identified for preservation or a lot containing green belt. Uh, Fran's recommendation was to first change the word permitted to required. So this would be an OSC required reduction in absence of green belt. His next recommendation in that was to, after the semicolon, to add a but, so it would read OSC required reductions in absence of green belt, but adjacent to a preserved lot, a lot identified for preservation or a lot containing green belt. Um, and I think that reads easier as well and his other recommendation in that column was to specifically call out that this is the RRC by, uh, having a three and one-third acres at the end of the column. So again, his recommendation would be to have that box read OSC required reductions in absence of green belt, but adjacent to a preserved lot, a lot identified for preservation or a lot containing green belt, three and one-third acres. Uh, I think that would make that box a lot easier to read as well.
We did, we're, we're talking about the fifth box, correct?
We were talking about, I'm sorry, no, the, the third
Oh.
third box.
Oh, oh, I see, okay.
Yes, we will get to the fifth box though, he had similar recommendations for that one.
So we're saying that the column two is not required.
Column two, which reads OSC permitted reductions in absence of green belt, three and one-third acres, that would be your optional element, yes.
In absence of green belt, but some of these other things are also in absence of green belt, but they have other requirements.
Exactly, yes. So that second column, OSC permitted reductions in absence of green belt, three and one-third acres. Imagine that's basically a lot that almost exists as a misnomer, so it's by itself, it's not next to anything that's preserved, it's not next to anything that's identified for preservation, not identified to any or next to any green belt, it's really just, as Sam said, some isolated lots.
But basically you're saying anything in one in column two is, is basically anything that isn't in column three. So to do that properly, you would have to put all the rest of the stuff in it. Because if you're, basically you're saying we permitted reductions in absence of green belt, three and a third acres. So now you're not mentioning any of the other stuff.
So would your recommendation would be to change that to read OSC permitted?
Basically be whatever isn't included in the, in the next one.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, if you, if you're making a subset and now you've got the one on the, to the right of it only as a piece of the subset, it, it doesn't work out. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, so, yeah, so would it help if we change that to read OSC permitted reduction in absence of green belt, semicolon, and not adjacent to a preserved lot?
It would almost be the third column and then the other one is everything else. In some way.
Yeah, well, my recommendation was going to be just identify and not adjacent to a preserved lot, a lot identified for preservation or a lot containing green belt.
So. So it's, it's everything, it's, it's basically not number, number three, it's not the third box.
Exactly, yes.
So, yeah, so you, so you need to do that because otherwise that subset goes into the Venn diagram, uh, with the, with the other subset.
So, so, yeah, so identifying that one specifically and not, and makes it basically the opposite of what we have in the next column.
Right.
Okay.
And, and the same thing for the next two.
Yep.
Um, was there a discussion on the amount of the lot, the lot size there?
Let me go through these rows and then another edit that Fran had and then we can get into that discussion next and some of the rationale for why we picked what we did. Very similar to the third column, the fifth column, Fran also recommends again changing permitted to required. And then also adding a well, he doesn't add it there, but we should, but adjacent to, to be consistent. And then adding a one and two-thirds acre beneath that to specify that is per the R dash one C, so now that fifth column will read OSC required reductions in absent of green belt, but adjacent to a preserved lot, a lot identified for preservation or a lot containing green belt, one and two-thirds acre. And then finally, that, uh, that last top right box, uh, again, Fran recommended and I agree, changing permitted to required reductions, adding the word within before the word presence on green belt, on tract, three and one-third acres and one and two-thirds acres. So cleaning up that existing language, uh, to make it a little more clear about what's required.
Saying within presence of green belt?
He said within present, or I'm sorry, with presence of green belt.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Does presence mean that green belt is part of the property?
Yes, uh, with, yes, so the green belt would be on the property. And that's why he's also recommending on tract, so it would be with presence of green belt on tract. Uh, one of the other recommendations that Fran had would be to add an entire new row beneath that, so a new row above lot area which identifies minimum tract area. Then again, I think this would be a helpful addition to the existing table. Under minimum tract area, we discussed that this is an optional element if you have twenty acres. So we would specify twenty acres under the first, I'm sorry, the second and the fourth column, so as we discussed, the OSC permitted reductions and the absence of green belt and not adjacent to preserved land, a lot identified for preservation or a lot containing green belt, the columns that read three and one-third acres and one and two-third acres. Uh, we would add the minimum twenty acre size there. And for all the other ones, would be not applicable because it would be required no matter what that lot size is. Now, moving on to the lot areas, and this is where we made some of the edits uh, to this existing table based on these new categories. Um, we had identified a proposed lot size of one and one-third acres for those instances in the RRC district where we're now requiring this under the new three scenarios. Uh, presently, if you are in the RRC district and you want to do this as an optional development, you can reduce your lot size to fifty thousand square feet. For this one, again, in absence of green belt but adjacent preserved land, a lot identified for preservation or a lot containing green belt, we're recommending a minimum lot size of one and one-third acre. The lot frontage, lot width, lot depth and the yards match typically, uh, what we already have in the three and one-third acre cluster development. Likewise, for the reduction in the R one C district, we are proposing a minimum lot size of one acre, whereas where it's optional, you have three and a quarter, uh, three quarters acres. The rationale behind those lot sizes is we're trying to achieve some sort of balance with this. Um, we didn't want to go as low as what would otherwise be permitted with the optional because this is not an optional development, this is going to be required. Under those optional development patterns where you don't have green belt and you're not adjacent to one of those other scenarios, a developer can choose if they want to do that or not. Under this, there's no choice anymore, this is a little bit more onerous than what would otherwise be required. So we didn't want to reduce those lot sizes to the optional minimum lot sizes that we already have because we didn't want to have too major of a financial impact on what a subdivision could potentially get you. So it's a little bit of a balancing act, we're still trying to achieve the township's longstanding goals of getting open space preservation. At the same time, we don't want to necessarily discourage properties from trying to even do this because the minimum lot size would be too small. So we are trying to strike that balance and that's how we came up with one and one-third acre and one acre, so slightly larger than will be permitted under the optional.
So when you're doing optional, there's no middle ground, you have to go the whole way.
Have to go the whole way.
Yeah, you can't go take a third acre off and throw it in as open space or anything.
Exactly, yeah, so it would be, um, it would be going the whole way, um, and we didn't want to, I mean typically, you know, i- if you do a subdivision, say in the R twenty district, you have an acre of land. Both your lots could be, well, we'll make it bigger, we'll say you have two acres of land in the R twenty district, which requires a twenty thousand square foot lot. You could go and subdivide that piece of property in your R twenty district and get two one-acre lots and nobody's gonna really get a bad an eye. When this is required to reduce that, what we don't want to do is have developers see an optional, or I'm sorry, minimum lots of fifty, fifty thousand square feet and then only do lot sizes of say an acre or, I'm sorry, uh, uh, or sixty thousand square feet or something larger. We didn't want to give, or, or put developers and the board in an awkward situation where we established a minimum lot size of 50,000 square feet. But they come in with something larger and now they're jipping us out of additional open space.
Right. For the, for the one where we're making it not optional, we obviously have a certain amount we want to get.
Exactly. Yes.
Uh, so I'm just saying for the optional one, we're basically also, we're telling them this is what it's got to be also though.
Yes.
And they were, so you either make a big house with a big property or you go down with this and make it into a cluster.
Yes. And you can still have, and we'll get to that, you can actually still have a large house on these lots. Um, we allow uh, properties to keep the same floor area ratio and improvement coverage that they would otherwise have on a conforming lot size. And that's existing with our, that, that's presently allowed with our existing, uh, cluster development.
Right. Not, not the, no, just make, just make that absolutely clear. It's not when we have to reduce lot size, it's not that the FAR is the same. It's the amount of, you, you calculate the amount of floor area based upon the larger lot.
That is correct. Yeah. So yeah, that's more specific. So the floor area ratio percentage would remain the same. It's, I think, 13%. Um, Sam would know better, but you would calculate that based on a lot size that had not been reduced.
Right.
And the same thing with the improvement coverage. Except for certain lots and other zoning districts, which we're not changing with this, but that gets that to some older historic stuff.
So it's for the whole piece of property, which I think we do pretty much for everything.
Yes. Other questions that Fran had or recommendations, um, under notes, or, uh, uh, or I'm sorry, beneath the notes, you'll see B middle area, the minimum total area of a tract. His recommendation would be to change that to, uh, gross instead of total. So the gross area. Which I think is more consistent with our Nuban clager.
Where's that? Sorry, where, where, where's that?
Uh, so beneath the table, underneath that big paragraph that has the one next to it. Uh, you'll see B minimum area. The minimum total area, his recommendation was to change that to minimum gross area. He also had a question moving on in that same section. Um, specifically regarding where the track is adjacent to preserved property. Uh, Fran wrote, only this case and not adjacent to green belt or adjacent to lot identified for preservation. If only this case, then tract area, row and table should be deleted. He is correct. So we should change that language to match with the table. So it would be, again, reiterating those three scenarios. So not just against, uh, or Jason to preserve property, but properties identified for preservation or properties containing green belt. So we'll make that more consistent. And then he also had a follow-up question in item E. Uh, which we were just speaking about the permitted FAR and MIC shall remain the same as if the lot were not reduced in size. Uh, his question was be calculated on the noncluster minimum lot area size. That's correct. It would be calculated on the minimum noncluster lot area size. So those were the questions that Fran had, um, and the edits as well. I agree with all of them. Um, hopefully that cleared up some things. If board members had similar questions, however, willing to take any questions that the board and also the public may have.
I see a lot of, uh, thinking of heads. There's no comment. I'm curious. Do you have anything like the?
No, I, I think I understand. I s- I assume the public will have a chance to comment too. Um, so I think, I think I understand why some of those numbers are different and, and I do want to make it really clear that the second and third and the, um, I guess, fourth and fifth. Uh, where there's the carve out and where's the, you know, as far as that language is concerned.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and I, and I agree, we need better titles and, and everything on there because it, it wasn't very clear.
And any other comments from my colleagues here?
I'm just curious, um, because it's very complicated. Did a NASA team work with, with you on this? Did a NASA team work with you on this? I'm just curious.
It was, uh, could probably use a NASA team, quite frankly.
Okay. I'll see any other, I'll open it up to public comments for regarding, regarding this ordinance. Please say your name, address.
Allison Miller, 41 Windsor Drive. Um, thank you for going over Frances's comments. That covered the questions that I had. The table was not easy to understand. I didn't know whether any part of it was being, uh, added or I, I assume some was being added, but being removed. And, uh, there was no indication in the, um, the place that I got the ordinance from. So I think I understand the table as it has now been revised. And, um, I think that it will be, if you revise it as you suggested, it'll be clear to everyone. But please just clarify for me. Um, the FAR is the same as it would be on this, the, um, non-reduced tract. So you have the FAR 13% of three and a third acres on a reduced tract. Whether it's 50,000 square feet or smaller. So that's an awfully large house on a comparatively small tract. That's what you want?
Uh, that's a good question, Allison.
And that's what we currently allow. We currently allow the calculation that way under the existing ordinance. La Park one and La Park two, they were one acre zoning and they clustered down to a half an acre on those lots. So those homes were based upon 43, 560 square feet, even though it's a 20,000 square foot lot, the homes are on.
And I did misspeak. I'm sorry. The R dash one C, uh, is the 13% FAR. The RRC is a 5% FAR. But your sentiment is still correct, wherein you do take that FAR and improvement coverage based on whatever the non-clustered size of that would be. And, and Sam is also correct. That's something that we have on our existing ordinance. It does get a little bit more convoluted when you look at the R20, R20A and R20B districts for certain.
This doesn't apply to them.
No, no, but, um, there's still language in this section that deals with those, uh, cluster developments because they were cluster developments prior to 2008.
Okay.
Yeah.
But, uh, I just wanted to clarify. So the 13% would be only in the R1C, which is one and two-third acres. And the, um, RRC going down from three and a third, it's 5%. So it wouldn't be, well, you may want to take a look at maximum house sizes, uh, under all those various, uh, scenarios. And see if you want to, uh, do some tweaking on the FAR. But, uh, now that everything is clarified, uh, but that, that's your option. But, uh, my comments have been, uh, addressed and thank you very much.
Wait, is, is the FAR and the RRC 5%? Is that what you're saying, Allison?
That's what you just said. The, uh, FAR for the three and a third acres is 5%.
Correct. It's 5% in the RRC, 13% in the R1C.
So you may want to look at what the maximum house could be under those various scenarios. And as I said, tweak it or leave it. But look at it.
If you're a third the size of the property, now we're FAR 15%, so. No, I'm saying, if you're saying the FAR on the bigger property was 5%.
Correct. Yes.
And now you're one-third the size and you say we're three acres, you're down to one acre, whatever. So now you're looking at a 15% FAR, something like that on that particular.
No, I, I think it's.
No, I'm, I'm talking about the 5% FAR.
Right. I think.
And now you're taking, which was on a, say a three acre property, just rounding. Then what you're doing is if you're now putting a one acre property under that same house, which is what we're talking about. Essentially, we wind up with a FAR of three tons as much, which is 15%, which isn't anything crazy. Um, the question, the question I have is what's the, um, MIC on this?
The MIC.
I'm, I'm a little concerned about the.
And while Dave's looking that up, I just did a quick calculation. If you're using three acres, not three and a third and they, and they cluster down to one and a third, you would be able to put a 6,500 square foot home on that lot, on a one and one-third acre lot.
Uh, the MIC for the RRC district is 10%. And the MIC for the R dash one C district is 17%.
Okay. So we are going to have a little bit more impervious surface around the homes. And I, I assume when we, when this comes into planning or zoning, that they will make sure that the water goes into, into the, um, open space or wherever it can go safely.
Typically, yes, if there's going to be a subdivision with multiple lots, there would be some sort of stormwater management plan with it. Um, or some sort of basin that's going to be either on HOA, well, typically on HOA property. Um, I think we've had a, most recently a two lot subdivision, Sam, I forget where it was, but they had actually installed basin in the back as well. So that's something that would definitely be looked at.
But it doesn't sound, it's, it's not so high that it's something we, that would be impossible.
And I think the idea too, is to keep that improvement coverage, but rather than spread it across the site with the cluster development kind of focus it in a certain area, assuming that the rest of it will be open space and untouched.
Right. And, and that's the whole design, but we do have to move the water away from where the.
It's incentive to the developer because there's less linear feet of roadway or utilities or everything they have to put in. So that's an incentive to save the cut and costs too.
And, and the open space will be part of an HOA or we will take the property or?
We always have the option. It's changed back and forth between council where at one time the council wanted the town to own it at other times, which is currently, they want a homeowners association to own it.
So at this point, when if it came to the planning board, uh, would the planning board have a choice on that or?
The planning board wouldn't make the decision. It would be something I would talk to the council about when they came in for their, you know, the signing of the subdivision plan and resolution compliance, like I've done in the past. Now I don't even do it because I know your decision is to have a homeowners association.
Well, if it's two houses, it might be. Yeah. Okay. I just want to make sure that was taken care of one way or the other. Thanks.
So we will, um, we will, uh, barring any other future or additional comments or questions, we will make these changes. Uh, what I think Sam, if it makes sense as for the council, I'll prepare two versions, one, which is a red line to the red line. As well as just the final version. So that way the council can see the changes.
If you could, and then send it to Jerry, because Jerry's going to do a memorandum indicating that the board hopefully nine to zero approves the, uh, ordinance with the recommendations and it's in compliance with the master plan. Okay.
Sure. It's still open to the public.
Allison Miller, 41 Windsor Drive. Um, I, I would hate to see property that is adjacent to township owned property ending up having a homeowners association, uh, take care of it. When there's so much township property, I'm thinking of open space property number seven, which is surrounded by open space owned by the township. Uh, I, I would hate to have them have to have a six or seven person homeowners association for woods that would be, uh, not discernibly different from the township owned property around them. I, I think that should be the planning board's, uh, decision. If there's a property where there's no township owned open space, uh, con- contiguous, then why not have it a homeowners association? But I think that's just common sense and I, I think the planning board should have some say on that.
The planning board can make a recommendation, but it'll be up to the council to decide how they want to do it.
I'm sure that the council will be happy to, uh, take the planning board's recommendation, uh, into consideration.
I can tell you times they didn't, Allison, but we'll leave it at that.
I was being polite.
If, if I remember, there were at least several places, times when there was a piece of land and the builder or whatever just needed it over to the town and there was a recommendation like that because it was right smack in the middle of other open space that we owned and it made sense. Just do it. So hopefully we'll continue to do that.
That's something that gives address right now or when, uh, developer.
When, when an application, when an application comes in, Mike.
Yeah, that's what I saw. Okay. Uh, any other members of the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Please step up. No. Don't see any members of the public stepping up. So, um, I've taken a motion to, uh, approve this, um, referral ordinance as amended um, by David and Fran's, uh, comments and other comments.
So moved.
Andrea, exactly. I'm sorry.
Well, it's, it's not a, it's not a motion to approve. It's a motion to recommend the council that they adopt the, the ordinance. Uh, and we, and we reckon, we recommend the following changes.
The motion is, um, recommend to council as amended. So Andrea recommends, uh, um, the referrals back to council and Simon, you second it? And Simon seconded, count the vote, please.
Simon.
Please go along.
Mr. Lovero?
Yes.
Ms. Bari?
Yes.
Mr. Pankov?
Yeah.
Mr. Beg?
Yes.
Ms. Applegate?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mandel?
Yes.
Mayor Morate?
Yes.
Base Chairman Huberman?
Yes.
Chairman Carr?
Yes. Um, for, the, um, carries nine to zero. Okay. Next, next up is, uh, working session for draft, uh, community facilities plan element of the master plan. Can you unpack it now?
Any chance for five minutes?
This whole planet resilience. Oh, um, this is, yeah. Um, yes, well, yes and no. Um, the land, the municipal land is always embedded that any new land.
Yes.
Exactly. We can go back. My recommendation, I'm waiting to see other people do it first. I never like to be the first one that does it and I want to see. Yeah. Also, I, I really want to see, I've seen some hundred resilience plans that were done before this legislation. That would be more, it's more like. That would be more, it's more like. Yes, yeah, oh, not today, but um. Again, I don't know why the legislature made it part of the. No. Oh, yeah, with that, no, yeah, with that even like so. Before that, yeah. Oh, yeah, so. Yeah, so the, so Gert, the Highlands Council, which we're not, we're not in Highlands, obviously, but. Yeah. More in Sussex, more specific, actually, but um. They are. A, another web resource. Yeah, but I'd like to see what they're gonna have, because I want to see if there's like, if it's about a template for us, because right now it's. Oh, yeah, I noticed that, I'm gonna bring it up today. Yep. Oh, I'm gonna bring it up too. Yeah, I, that's. I will bring it up. I was reviewing it today and I was. I was, I used to say template, is that like everything was the same? No, but yeah. Well, no, yeah, no, I would, I would, so I put it out. I'll make that up that, and also. Yeah.
Oh, I can amend.
On screen, right? Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yes.
God, I like these breaks in there.
Yeah. See, you wanted to have another thing to probably. Yeah, that's what I made you do too. I made get rid of my A well account. It's been out there, you know, so smart. Or something, you know. You know, look at it, just since the meeting, I got eighty-five. All of them. If there's a day like on vacation, I'd be there on a phone later, and I come back with two days sleep. It doesn't. So. I got my, I don't know if it's allergy or what, but my ear is so. Ever since I came back to shore, I don't know if it's elevation change or weather or allergies or whatever. But even when I talk, I can hear it like that verbally. So it was in. So I'm just, it's like you're on a plane where you're on a plane, and then eventually. Mine hasn't talked yet. Well, you know what, and that's. And then I hear the. I thought it was Charlie. I'm seriously. Area of like people, it's that you had like. A reverse to stay, so. And they bought that and then we got. Yeah. Just five hundred. I'm gonna take them all and I got the plow down. Take them all. Yeah. Fifteen minutes. Yes. Yeah, I heard. Sorry if I was.
So.
Yeah, don't say what was. She's, she may not. And I noticed that they weren't underlined as well, so that was.
And then all of a sudden, we got a shot. That's how I felt.
Well, it's also because John Churchill. But there's nothing, I mean, I talked to maybe two applications for residential, but that was a month ago. Black slide, and I've always, I, I would have been thinking that would be. Cause next week's, yeah, I mean, if the next two weeks nothing comes in, then I'll cancel October and that'll be November. In November. We just probably, if we have one, it could be. They're saying that by Halloween, it should all be done on that condition. So we need to move everything back around and then so. This is ten, I don't know if that's gonna be on, so they may even cancel. This is ten. Yeah, that's ten.
Okay. Wow.
The only thing that is November ninth is the only death.
Great.
Let's see, a movie. Only death.
We're all in the room. I, I'd like to think we could. Uh, what do you think? I, I mean.
I'll be trying to. I said. And so what would you text it? I said, well, good evening. What did I say when you first walked in?
Andrew something.
Oh, yeah, it was true.
No, I meant.
Yes.
I didn't. I'm pretty good with it.
Oh, it's gonna, you'll have it by tomorrow. By the way, because your, the hearing isn't until number twelve, right? What I would like to know when I stand up to the committee chambers upstairs. Whether they disperse or not, I don't, because I can't disperse it directly to, but I will send it up to the queen and then if it gets dispersed back, then.
Please take your seats. It's been more than five minutes. I was, I was very lax in my research. How, how is your travel? It's good.
No, I need to wear a sweater. I forget, I forget. We haven't had a meeting in a while.
Okay, Jerry. Okay. Okay, uh, back in session. Next up, so we're gonna have a work session on uh. Element of the master plan.
Okay, uh, David, you want to give us kind of like an intro?
Yeah, absolutely. Um. So tonight we're gonna be discussing the draft community facilities element of the master plan. Should hopefully be dated August second, two thousand twenty-two. I uh, had to bind these documents myself because our office manager was out on vacation. So if any pages are upside down, it's entirely my fault. I apologize. Uh, it's important to note that this is a draft, so nothing's being adopted tonight. We have time for board and public to provide input for me to edit plan. So this is just a starting point. Uh, usually with these documents, I'll give a little bit of a spiel about what a master plan is. I'll shorten it up for tonight. It's a blueprint for where a township is. And where we'd like to go into the future. Uh, there are a number of mandatory elements of a master plan or chapters of a master plan. Uh, for example, land use plan is required, a recycling plan, a housing plan is quasi-required. Community facilities element is not. It's an optional one. We actually presently have one right now, so this is essentially an update of that. The municipal land use law. When describing a community facilities element establishes that it shows the existing and proposed location. And types of educational or cultural facilities, historical sites. Libraries, hospitals, firehouses, police stations and other related facilities, including their relationship to this surrounding area. So our strategy when we were crafting this community facilities plan element was twofold. One, it was to partially serve as an update to the prior two thousand two plan. Which had recommendations regarding uh, the township's existing community facilities. Specifically, the municipal complex, the fire department, rescue squad, public works and schools. In talking with Sam, one of the other ideas that we came up with this, for this document, was to make it a usable document for times of emergency, so. Uh, adding some sort of resiliency aspect to this document. So we wanted to incorporate. Uh, homeowners associations, neighborhood associations and gas stations. The latter of which we would typically or ordinarily consider a community facility. But if you think about during times of emergency where gases or generators are, they actually do serve as important facility functions within community. So the process for this document was uh. Long and onerous. Uh, we reached out to uh, township staff, we reached out to the board of education. And picked their brains and, and I bothered many people with phone calls. The police department was actually nice enough to invite me in. Uh, thankfully not in handcuffs this time. To discuss what they thought their needs were and um, you know, looking at the old plan, where we established where things were and then moving forward, what was needed for the future. So. We have two overarching goals for this plan and then we can take it section by section. Uh, goal A is to provide a superior level and range of community facilities and services which are well-located. And adequate to serve the existing and anticipated population. The second goal, like I mentioned, is to enhance the township preparedness for emergency situations. So. It is a, essentially a twofold document. Really wanted to make this a usable, workable document for the township. That being said, uh, typically what we've done in the past with these documents, if we gone from section to section. Um, sometimes even earlier than that, the board can point out where I've uh, made some typographical errors. I've already identified two or three of those as well earlier today. Uh, but also provide more substantive input as well about ideas or uh, concepts or other recommendations you might have for the plan. Uh, so that being said. Uh, unless anybody has any objections to any part earlier in the plan, uh, we can start in the introduction. Yeah, of course.
Why is the housing plan?
Oh, okay, that's a good question. Uh, and this is a good trivia question for, uh, if you ever have to take your uh, um, like planning conference questions. Um. A housing plan is technically identified as an optional element of a master plan. However. The municipal land use law notes that if you want to have a zoning ordinance, you have to have a housing plan. So if you don't have a housing plan, technically municipality is not allowed to have a zoning ordinance. So it's just optional, but it's really not. Okay. So.
Roman numeral three.
That is before the introduction, Gert.
That's why I'm bringing it up before you, before you started the introduction. Roman numeral three, um, the personnel of the planning board. Uh, vice chair is two words.
Uh, wait one second, Gert, before you go any further. Thank you guys, I wanted to make sure I was tracking changes, so.
Yep, vice chair is two words. Uh, Jodica, as of tonight, is class two. And Robert Lovero is alternate number one.
We will make those changes. Do we have an alternate too?
Uh, it's a vacant, it's.
Okay.
Right now. We're taking applicants.
Intent, mayor.
They're lining up for that time.
Tell them it's a high-paying gig. Anything else in the uh, before introductory section? If not, we can move on to the introduction to the plan.
Maybe you want to just mention a little thing.
Oh, about Jean. Yes, absolutely. Um. So we uh, added a memorandum to uh, Jean. Um, on the inside of the cover. Specifically, it reads this plan is dedicated to the memory of Eugene Jean R. O'Brien. Who volunteered his time and served the community as a planning board member and member of the township committee for over forty years. Um. You know, I was lucky to work with Jean for several years, same with everybody here. Um, obviously, I miss him dearly. Uh. He, up until his very last meetings, was the quintessential quarterback directing traffic. And I, I think about. What he was going through towards the end of his tenure. While still maintaining composure and dressing to the nines as well, so. Thought I would like to, I thought it'd be nice to have this dedication for him and Sam thought it'd be nice as well, so. I wish it was on a more exciting master plan element rather than a community facilities one, but. Um, I think it's a nice, uh, nice memorandum. He really was commuting. You know what? That's a great point. Yeah. He, he did work with the community for over forty years, so that's a great point. We could add a picture of him, yeah. Does anybody have a, if anybody has a decent picture of him that we'd like to add to the plan, let me.
The Jean O'Brien master plan element.
Okay, yeah, mayor, if you can email me a picture, that'd be great, or a text or whatever works. Yeah, yeah, thanks, Sam, for pointing that out. Moving on to um. The introductory section. Uh, there are a couple typos I noticed. Uh, oftentimes that this will. For example, on the bottom page three, um, it says, as shown, utilities element is optional. That should read a community facilities plan element. What I will do is take a similar template that we used for a prior plan and, and copy it with this, and I just forgot to change some of the language, so. Uh, that's also reiterated on page four, uh, the first paragraph. Furthermore, the N L U L N J S A forty point fifty-five B dash twenty-eight D five. Identifies the requirements of a, it says, community or utilities plan. It should be a community facilities plan. Element specifically established that a community facilities plan element should show the following. So we'll fix that as well as the citation.
What page was that?
That was on page four, first paragraph. Uh, that we can keep lowercase because it's talking about a community facilities plan element in general. Um, the way I always look at it, we can go either way, but the way I always look at it, if you're talking about a plan element in general. It's lowercase. If you're talking about this specific plan element, it's capitalized. Exact, yeah, so. It's like Earth versus the Earth, I suppose. And yes, I compared our master plan document to the entire planet, so. And there's nothing else in the, in the introductory section. We can move on to goals and policies. A lot of these goals and policies are reiterated from the prior plan. Uh, we did add goal B, which is to enhance the township's preparedness for emergency situations. And several policies with that, which is to maintain and update inventory of the pot township's public, quasi-public and private facilities. As well as their capabilities for emergency situations. To encourage the coordination of emergency services with surrounding municipalities. To encourage houses of worship and homeowners associations to install emergency generators. And to require all new gasoline service stations to install emergency generators as well.
On policy one, it's a really clarity on quasi, quasi-public. I mean, what that really means in this context?
Quasi-public is a term of art, I suppose. That would be like a house of worship. So. Something that is open to the public, but it's not really open to the entirety of the public, so to speak. Uh, so I would consider typically a house of worship. A nonprofit lodge, like an Elks Lodge or a VFW hall, things like that to be a quasi-public or semi-public.
Thank you.
If, if we can go back to uh, goal A for a moment, policy six. I'm not exactly sure what one takes away from that in terms of. What kind of guidance this is being put, is being provided here. I don't know if we need more detail on that or. Um, or how, how to, whether it's efficient the way it is. But I know when I read it, I thought, well, okay, so what do we do? What are, what are we recommending here? And what are we looking for in terms of how we, how, how are we going to encourage? And what are we looking for in terms of how we, how are we going to encourage these efficiencies? Actually, the cluster.
Now, I was about to say, the cluster might be one of them.
Yeah, yeah.
Bear with me one second. I just wanted to see how that compares to our existing language. Yeah, so it was something similar in the last language. I agree, this is a little bit vague. "Encourage efficiencies in the design of new residential development that will minimize public service costs."
Can you add examples of efficiencies? That's kind of broad in general.
Yep, we can. We'll add some examples. Cluster might be one of them. Well, we can add examples of that, expand upon that a little more.
So is that, is that talking about roads, or are we talking about sewer systems or the whole nine yards of everything?
Really the whole nine yards there.
Solar, could be solar ready, right?
Yep.
Well, when it says minimize public service costs, I would assume that's something like make it easier for fire trucks, or make it easier to do maintenance, that DPW could do something a little bit more automatically than they're doing now, if it's a cost issue for the town.
Could be, for example, even centralizing, you know, trash and recycling areas as well. So then there's a broad thing, broad range of recommendations we can make.
Okay, great.
For policy three with the school district, it seems like it's been getting much more difficult to get any kind of building or use, you know, that the schools have been busy after, after school, and I believe they, come on, maybe you could tell. If we wanted to use the schools for something, there is a charge for it now, you know, just automatically get it pre-used. Is that is that true? Do we have to pay to use the schools if we wanted to hold things in the schools?
We meaning who?
The town.
No, the school has a facilities use policy. I mean, they just started allowing people back in again after COVID-19.
Right. I know, I know they just started doing that, but is that something we would pay for?
I mean, as a township, I don't think we have ever used it since I became mayor. Sam, did you pay for it when you used it for planning board meeting for Howard Hughes?
I'm sorry.
Wait, did you play, pay for the school when you used it for Howard Hughes meeting?
No.
Yeah.
Is that still true? Because I know a lot of, a lot of things that the school used to give to different groups for free, they're now charging for it. So I, I'm just throwing it out there that it seems to be a lot harder to get the schools, even forgetting COVID, it's been a lot harder to get time in the schools for anything.
Yeah, I, that was bought in 2016, I think we had those meetings.
Yeah.
And Dr. Adlerhold paid to have his IT staff work with me to get everything set up. The custodian staff put everything together and broke everything down, and they didn't charge us anything.
Okay, that was six years ago, though, right?
Yeah. No, I mean, the school, school does let local nonprofit, I mean, nonprofit-based investors use the school facilities.
They do, but I know for certain things that the expense is pretty, they charge a lot of money.
Yeah, but most of the money is for custodial service. I mean, it's, and usually people use it on Saturday and Sunday, so it's one and a half times or two times. That's what most of the cost is. Not for, not for the classroom or the building.
Dave, on your goal, goal B, in your policy one, you indicate private facilities. But I noticed that in section four and I think section five is your recommendation. You talk about municipal emergency services. You talks about houses of worship and homeowners associations. You don't provide any information about private facilities. I'm thinking maybe something like major employers in the township that might provide some shelter to the public in an emergency, or allowing them to use their lobby, or allowing them to use outlets to charge phones or whatever.
So we, I would have considered like a homeowners association and a neighborhood association to be more private in nature. That would be kind of what I would envision. We certainly could try to reach out to some of those larger corporate offices. I don't necessarily know, Sam, who would reach out to in terms of like Carnegie Center or those facilities.
I know that Chief Lynch has an emergency preparedness plan together, and I know Simon, he's talked to different corporate folks about use of their facilities. So I'd rather not duplicate what he did. This is more, as David said, it's more like quasi-public or public-type facilities where a good example is the clubhouse is at the different apartment complexes and so forth. That would allow, in case the heat goes out, I know they might be able to use that. I know when the power went out, a lot of the residents came to the senior center here to power their cellphone. So if, if when we did our analysis, if the, if the clubhouses have the capabilities to charge phones, those folks don't need to drive all the way to here. Plus, most of the clubhouses do have emergency generators.
There's a lot of mention of educational or cultural facilities, historic sites in, in, you know, in the introduction of the community facilities plan element requirements. And then if you go on to goal A, there's also in policy four, mention of community and youth groups, basically facilities that cater to community and youth groups and cultural activities. Do you think it might be beneficial to mention some of the organizations that are around town that are actually catering to, you know, some of these you know, demands, as well as, you know, meeting the varied lifestyles of a diverse population? Like, for instance, houses of worship have been mentioned, right? And in fact, I'm curious to know why houses of worship have been mentioned, because it, as you yourself pointed out, that it's not really a public place, right? I mean, in the strict sense of the term as, as it's defined.
So to address the first question, to identify other cultural groups, I, I think we can do that in this plan. I would just need some sort of guidance or assistance, either from the township website or something like that, identifying what those cultural groups and cultural activities are. If I can find a listing like that, then I think that would be something that would be worthwhile to include in this plan. The houses of worship, you are right, is quasi-public. The reason we included it is twofold. One, that was something that was in our prior plan, so we wanted to maintain some sort of consistency of what was there. And the second one was just as Simon mentioned, looking at emergency preparedness and whether or not we can utilize any of those facilities in those types of scenarios. So if we do have a list of cultural organizations in the township, I think that would be a good thing to include in this as well. I just don't know if we have that list.
How could we go about creating that list?
Are you looking, are you talking about cultural organizations with facilities?
Yeah, I mean, without, I mean, I hope there's no conflict of interest here, but I'm thinking about the Arts Council, for instance. You know, which is actually.
Yeah, I mean, you can add arts council, you can add all the sports, youth sports group, Little League, Pop Warner.
Well, I, I think the idea is to have one with facilities, like the Arts Council has, has a actual facility that can be used. Or, yeah, something.
We're talking about the historic site of the Skank Farmstead, for instance, which is I, I, I think it's sort of like headquarters for the historical society.
If you look at the conservation plan element, it lists all historic sites and buildings and so forth in there, so it's picked up in the conservation plan element. And that's something that the Environmental Commission with Dan Dobremilski is working, to be working on next year, and going to be brought back to this board for adoption.
The what element? The conservation?
Conservation.
Conservation plan element. It currently exists. It hasn't been updated. It's on the top ten list for Dave and I to work on for next year.
This is, this seems to be much more safety-oriented or resilience, resilience planning, if you will, like this is the current word. Places that could be used for facilities that could be used emergencies or facilities that we might need for meetings, or facilities we might need to keep the government going and need to be increased. I, I'd like to throw out here that these are all existing facilities, and I know everybody can grow, and if you will. I have heard the idea of a community center type of facility raised every so often that would have some sort of a large building that might have a gym in it, that might have some meeting rooms, and that conceivably could be used in an emergency, and conceivably could be used if we needed to hold an extremely large indoor meeting on, in one large place. We even have property available.
I think the mayor has that in the budget for next year, right, Mayor? Couple million dollars, right? I thought so.
I, I, I would want to, if we're going to be working on this, I do think something like that should at least be floated as, is this something we would want to think about? And it wouldn't even need to be now. It could be five years from now. It could be fundraising plan. It could be when money comes from some, from some, you know, apply for it here or there. But, but, but it might be something that I think we could at least put as an aspirational possibility, or at least find out if the public thinks it's something we would want as an aspirational.
I think that's fine, right, Dave?
Yeah, it's, yeah. This is an aspirational document, partly. Same thing with our open space plan. I always explain it's kind of like a wishlist, so what this does is it at least provides for some sort of accountability, so that way if the planning board or the township does eventually decide to do something, you at least have a document to point to and say, hey, this is something that we've contemplated, we've actually put thought to this. Doesn't always necessarily mean it's going to happen, but it's something that we can include with the conversation. I don't know if we can identify maybe a specific site, but to have that idea, notion floated out.
Something like a community center, and it could be on the municipal complex. It could be somewhere else. I mean, that, that could all be thought of later, but.
I, I like that idea. When I was growing up, we had a community center. It was in an elementary school, but it was run by an organization that called themselves, you know, community center, Queens Valley Athletic Association, where there was the Police Athletic League, and it was held in the gymnasium of a local elementary school. But everybody referred to it as, hey, I'm going to the community center. So the idea doesn't have to be that multimillion-dollar complex funded by the township, but it could be an organization that, you know, congregates or gets the word out, and it takes place in one of the schools and the gymnasium. Just a thought.
We will add language regarding community center.
And it kept me out of a lot of trouble, too.
I think we'll probably add some sort of recommendation with that in section five, recommendations. Or some sort of language discussing that. You know, I don't necessarily know the answer to that. Let me follow up with the engineering department. That was something that was included as a goal in the prior plan.
Wasn't that something we're not allowed to legally do now?
What was that?
I said, that's something I think we used to do things like that. Like when they put Nassau Park in, they had to put some sort of a facility or something like that, and then didn't they make it where we're not allowed to ask for that kind of thing now?
They volunteered to do that.
Okay, okay. So so would we legally be able to require something like that?
We couldn't make it a condition to the approval.
We, we couldn't, and we couldn't make an ordinance that would, so it would have to be ask, an ask, like supposedly Avalon's doing their, that little promenade or something, but not.
So what kind of community, what kind of community facility would we be talking about?
That's what I'll have to follow up on.
I'm, I'm just thinking out loud, Dave, maybe if it's several developers want to contribute for some recreation facility on township property that's undeveloped for use of that neighborhood for those, you know, for the community in that area.
Could very well be. I just want to make sure that it's not relating to, you know, requiring somebody to, for example, buy like a fire truck for it. That's, that's kind of what I want to make sure.
Or if it's too small, their property you're developing to contribute for upgrades to a local community park.
If we switch required to encourage, does that work?
Could potentially, but I'll still follow up and see if anybody has any idea of what that, the genesis of that was. Anything else with goals and policies? If not, we can move on to section three, existing and projected demographics. So I may make some slight adjustments to our demographic projections based on multipliers from what we call the Who Lives in New Jersey Housing, which is released by the Center of Urban Policy Research, Edwards Blasting, Pliny School of Public Policy at Rutgers University. But those will be minor in nature. I don't think it's really going to change our projection that much. So you just might see that in the future.
On, you talk about the latest decennial survey.
Yes.
Did you like put a publication date in there for that?
Not necessarily, because it's still being published. Data from that decennial survey is still coming out.
Okay, I, you know, I just thought that it was a completed.
The census was completed, but it takes so long for them to process some of the information that we're still seeing a rollout of that data.
All right. You know, I just thought.
Any questions or comments regarding the demographic portion? Always the most exciting portion.
Page fourteen. First paragraph. The last such study of the public school projections was March 2018. And it says there's an estimate of three thirty-four students by the upcoming, this upcoming school year, twenty, well, the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Do we have any update on that? Any from school board?
So there's been no new demographic study based on discussions with Dr. Adlerhold. Yeah, that last demographic study was done back in 2018. However, in the section, pardon me, section four point five, we do go into some of the enrollment trends. So the 2021, 2022 school year had, we can have data labels to these, but I believe that believe the enrollments were probably less than what was otherwise projected. And we'll get to that in section four point five, but school projections have actually gone down. Or school enrollment has actually gone down over the past few years.
And David, on that same page, where it lists those five developments that the the school board had referred to in appendix. Now, two of them, the third one is a conflation of two different developments. One, one is Garden Homes, and the second is Prince and Executive Park. But I take it we leave it the way it is, because this is not something, this is not our text. It's the.
Exactly, yes. Yeah, so the way that study was structured was that it came up with a projection, but because it was being crafted at a time where we didn't know what our housing plan was going to be at the end of the day, as well as some ambiguity or unknowns regarding the Atlantic Realty Site, formerly the Howard Hughes property, it basically provided a second projection in that document saying, hey, this, if these approved, if these developments get approved, this is what we think the projection might be. So it was a twofold projection, one that was based on normal trends and the other one was based on these developments, whether or not they got built out or not.
Okay, and then I have something on page thirteen. On the demographic projections, the township's population is projected to increase over the next several ad years. You see where I am?
Yep.
I'm sorry, actually, I don't, we beat that one, we're not, Jerry, I'm sorry.
This is page thirteen, uh, demographics. Right under the text, demographic projections, the first line reads, the township's population is projected to increase over the next several. But you want to add years at the end. You see where I am?
Okay, I'm sorry, there's this, another paragraph that has the same, similar language, I was looking at that, yes.
Is there, is there, um, is there any way to add more detail about projected percentage of increase as opposed to just increase?
Yes, absolutely.
Projected to increase ten percent over the next several years, twenty percent, five percent, so on.
Yes, I think it's a great recommendation.
Is, who lives in New Jersey that, uh, from Rutgers, is that something that's published annually?
No, unfortunately, it's not. The last update, I believe, was from two thousand and eighteen.
Then I would suggest putting in a, uh, some sort of statement as to when that was published, like.
I would agree.
Two thousand and eighteen.
I would do a footnote on that.
Is there any way to relate, um, like, looks like we've aged three years in the last twenty, which I wish, I wish I could do that, but is there any way to relate that with, um, the housing stock? Because we do have more senior housing stock, but I don't know for sure how that relates to how much regular uh, housing stock we have. And so is there some way to chart or graph? What percentage of the, um, of the housing is age restricted? Uh, with time, so we see, so we see whether or not people are aging in place? Or is part of the reason that thing people are getting older on average is because we're putting, we put a big senior housing, uh, stock in and then a bunch of people move in? And so the full, the number goes up.
So I think there might be a way to go about looking at that. I, I think it might not be available from the decennial census, but I think the American Community Survey, which again is from the US Census Bureau, I think has statistics based on where people lived five years ago or so. Um, so that might provide some sort of general idea of whether or not people are aging in place. It's not a perfect remedy, but it's at least one thing we can look at and see if we can discern anything from that.
And, and also if we're just looking at a, one point in time for current demographics, it would be good to know how many of, how many people over a certain age are living in one senior type housing as compared to just regular standard house.
Well, we can, it, it's tough to discern that from the census. We could break that out further though with our demographic projections, because I do provide different, or I did calculate utilizing different multipliers for non-age restricted versus age restricted. So we could break out the projected population like that. In terms of existing demographic information, it might be a little bit more difficult, but I'll take a look and see what information the census has, um, see if we can find out what type of housing stock is housing what type of age.
And, and one thing that does become an issue for is things like emergic, emergency services. Are they going to one place? Or are they going all over the place when, when there are, you know, something happening with older people, too?
I'll see what I can find.
In, uh, on page fourteen, you talk about the school district, you talk about affordable housing, uh, but you don't have any numbers. Is that just something that you have later on in the document or are you aren't gonna have any numbers?
School projection, uh, school, I'm sorry, uh, numbers for affordable housing, do you mean, what, what do you mean exactly?
This projection does not account for the township's affordable housing obligation. Page fourteen, so is, are you gonna have anything who care about accounting for that, or are you just, um, not gonna have it at all?
Okay, so I'm sorry. So when it says that however, this projection did not account for the township's affordable housing obligation, that projection is referring to the two thousand and eighteen study from the school district, which had estimated three hundred and thirty-four students. So that two thousand and eighteen study from the Board of Education had projected three hundred and thirty-four additional school kids by the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. That projection of three hundred and thirty-four, though, did not account for the township's affordable housing obligation because the housing plan was still being developed and the township was still under litigation at that time. What that March two thousand and eighteen study did was it assumed the development of five different multifamily developments, or four hundred steps, Transit Village, which is the Avalon Bay Project, the Lowe's Dash Garden Center, which is Princeton Executive Park, American Properties, which is, uh, was Heritage Village, and the Howard Hughes Property, Atlantic Realty. It assumed that those would be developed and it came up with the projection on that of an additional one thousand one hundred and twenty public school kids. So the study did, but ultimately come up with some sort of projection based on multifamily developments. But that proved to be somewhat not inaccurate, but some of those developments didn't come to fruition, so. Long story short, that two thousand and eighteen study provided two projections, one which did not include affordable housing and one which did.
Okay, but, okay, so you're, you're reporting, uh, something from two thousand and eighteen that didn't come to fruition? So you don't have the numbers, the, the current numbers are not reflected within that because those developments didn't come to fruition?
In that follow, in that discussion, yes, um, in that discussion of the, uh,
Well, what, what about, what about, we're, we're talking about two, two thousand twenty-two now, so what's the projections for affordable housing and what's the projections for the school district?
I believe that's located in the last paragraph, which is one thousand one hundred and twenty additional public school children. So I apologize, I misspoke earlier. So the two thousand and eighteen study from the district had projected two thousand one hundred and four public school kids, when we accounted for all those developments. What we did in the study is, and as discussed in the last paragraph, is we took the multipliers, the public school children multipliers that was provided in that two thousand and eighteen study, applied it to the list of developments that were approved by the township in our housing plan and haven't been constructed yet or were under construction. And that generates, uh, one thousand one hundred and twenty additional public school children that we're projecting over the next several years as those developments get built out. Those are based off older multipliers from the district, so once the district, if the district comes up with a new study, which would presumably come up with new multipliers, we might have to revisit that in the future. But based on those older multipliers, that's what we came up with.
So that makes it current.
That's yes, yes.
Okay, that's what I'm concerned about.
And Andrea, to go back to your question, maybe what I'll do is see if we can come up with a map of the township's different census tracts or census blocks and come up with a median age from there, which would maybe identify where our older census tracts are versus our younger census tracts. So that might be one way to go about addressing your question. Okay, any other questions with, uh, section three, existing and projected demographics? If not, we can move on to section four, which is an overview of facilities.
Uh, in four point one, uh, we have the listing of, of what's gonna be expanded on in the overview of facilities in numbers one, three, uh, sixty-one. And, um, these are also the key to the, uh, maps in the appendix, correct?
That is correct.
What I would like for this document is the repeat of this list at the beginning of the appendix. So if someone's in the appendix looking at the map, they don't have to try to find section four point one of the document to key the numbers of the facilities on the maps uh, to, you know, this page, internal page of the document.
So you would like this repeated on the maps themselves?
I don't know.
No?
I would like it repeated as like the first page or two of the appendix.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
In the appendix.
Yes.
Where the maps are, they don't have to go page all the way back into the document to find this list.
We can definitely add that as the, uh, in the appendix as well.
Another commentary then, um, uh, on certain, uh, doc, uh, certain items uh, on the maps in the, in the schools category that there are certain items that are community facilities yet are not in West Windsor Township. And so for those map items, number eight, nine, ten, twelve, fourteen of the school district that are in Plainsboro Township that I would like a parenthetical on this list here in overview of facilities mentioning that they are in Plainsboro Township to distinguish that from a reader thinking that they are in West Windsor because everything else is in West Windsor.
Okay, we can add that. We'll either do it specifically or we'll have a little notation, um, but we'll add that, uh, we'll make that clear. Yeah, originally I wanted to have that list on the maps themselves, but
But that, that, that.
It would have been, yeah, it would have been tough.
You have room on these pages.
I know, I know.
Bringing that list forward backwards to the appendix, would it be beneficial with each quadrant? Having listed just those numbers within that quadrant?
That, that, I'm open, I'm open to that. If that, if that helps legibility, if that helps the reader find things, yeah, that you're, as a reader, to find it, yeah, I'm open to it if it, if it can be pulled off.
If it can be pulled off, yeah, so we'll, uh, we'll take a crack at it. Uh, it might be small font, but on a PDF, if somebody's looking at it on a computer, they'll at least be able to make it bigger, but we can, we can play around with it. Oh, I see what you're saying.
On the quadrant page is not necessary.
Yeah.
Right, so you, the groupings would be different, but you're asking for the groupings to be different and not so much by category and go in numbered order, but by quadrant, let's say.
Right, and the numbers within that quadrant would be identified on the page.
Before it, yes.
And they're not, they wouldn't be numerical, they would, you know, they could be, you know.
You know, that's, that's a good idea. So before the quadrant page, what we'll do is that we'll have an eight half by eleven page that'll identify the IDs that are on that quadrant. Okay, yeah, we can do that. Yes. We can absolutely do that.
Dave, quite, just a question, um, this is on page sixteen, item number, three, you actually have two item number threes. The second item number three is Capital Health Systems, what, what is that?
Oh, I do have two item threes. Um, Capital Health Systems used to be an old, um, things actually discussed on page. Yes, the old first aid squad, it's discussed on page twenty-six. Uh, was the old first aid squad, um, it has since been, um, I don't want to say eliminated, but it's no longer, no longer around. Oh, wait, no, it is.
I, I think they still have an ambulance.
It is, I was thinking of something else.
Well, health does have ambulances out of the.
I was thinking, I'm sorry. It is.
Okay, it's the, uh, mobile stroke unit.
On that, some Princeton Junction, you're, you're on that, right?
It's, it operates from the Princeton Junction Volunteer Fire Company.
Yeah, it's, it's the mobile stroke unit. For capital.
That's, that's provided by Capital Health, right?
Yep, my apologies, I was thinking of the, uh, twin W first aid squad, that no longer exists, yes.
Yeah, that, that would be the, uh, emergency services building now.
Yes. Yep, and that's the reason why the three reiterates there. So Capital Health System is located in the same building as the Princeton Junction Volunteer Fire Company.
Three and three A?
Uh, it could, it would just make the map a little bit, you're gonna have a three A and a three B right on top of each other, I'm like, it'll.
Can I make a suggestion that we just use a bigger map? I mean, yeah, we have plenty of large maps, like we have West Windsor, just use a huge, bigger piece of paper.
If, we could, but okay, so we could, uh, have like a twenty-four by thirty-six, but the reason we do a eleven by seventeen is because they could be folded up and actually included in the document. Um, we could try to do a twenty-four by thirty-six.
Going to this piece and that piece.
What, what we can do, Dave, is the twenty-four by thirty-six is, you give it to me electronically and I'll post it on the website under the master plan, so they can, like the zoning map, if you go on the master plan or on the website, you could zoom in and zoom out and pick properties out. So for the electronic version, it'll be the big map on the website that you can zoom in and out of. But for the hard copy, just from my records, it'll be the eleven by seventeen.
Um, I, I like the, the quad maps that we have, and I guess my suggestion I would want to keep the quad maps, Andrea. Um, but I would also want maybe a, a small just a little key in the corners that you know of the four quads which you're in. You know, if you looked at a, a, a little, just a little, just a little like outline of West Windsor right here. And so you can see which, where the, where your quad is in relation to the other three. So you can, so you can, instead of having to try to figure out by going back to map one.
Yep, that's something we can do.
They had that on some of the drawings we got.
See, if you make the whole map in that size, it will look very small. I mean, you can have a blown up, but by splitting in quad, you can actually read it, read that.
Yeah, we can have, we can do again, we can have the quads and then I can print out separately a twenty-four by thirty-six or seven, even a thirty-six by forty-eight map of those, so we can, we can do both.
On page seventeen, um, uh, in the list of the homeowners associations, uh, the number thirty-seven, the Estates at Princeton Junction Homeowners Association is just that, it's not the news. So I think, um, I'm a resident there, so the news is actually an apartment.
Okay, so we'll eliminate just the news and also have it as the Estates at Princeton Junction Homeowners Association.
Um, and I think if you look through that site where it says homeowners associations, some of them actually have some kind of a headquarters or you know, a, a pool or something, and some of these, um, I'm, I'm not gonna guess which ones, but I, I have some ideas are really, you know, somebody has an email list or a WhatsApp group and that's kind of listed as some sort of a of a association or neighborhood group or something like that, so from facilities point of view, I don't know if it's useful for anything. Like, for instance, I don't believe there is any kind of structure or anything in Bury, Buryan City.
David, I can go through those.
Yeah.
So you would just want to eliminate the ones that don't have anything?
If it, if it's not, you know, there, there may be a hundred more if you just do it by loose associations. So you might know about some of these because they have a website, you might not know.
Okay.
Yeah, so you might want to take out anything that there's no actual facility, because this is presumably a facilities document.
Okay, and but, and that would carry over then to section four point seven, where we talk about the, uh, for example, and I think John Paul had too much, but we have Buryan City Neighborhood Civic Association, we have the location and we have clubhouse, no amenities, no. So if we get rid of it in that list, we'd also be getting rid of it on the mapping as well as here as well.
I'm just thinking that if you have some, there's probably a whole bunch you've missed.
Well, this is based off of a list that we get from the township, so, um, it's like a contact list for the homeowners associations and neighborhood associations, so it should be comprehensive.
And they're official and they actually represent the people there, is it just?
There's a name and a contact number, an email address and a phone number for everything we have listed here. Not all of them have physical structures and so forth. We'll take the ones off that don't have physical structures.
Yeah, I mean.
It, it may be Sue, but I don't know if it doesn't, I don't, I don't know if it meet the purpose of what we're looking for, Dave, in the community facilities plan, I wonder if there's not a physical structure there that would say what's there.
But Sue has made a good point, and I remember this, this came up in. But Sue has made a good point, and I remember this, this came up in previous discussions about uh mapping in West Windsor. Do we actually have a map that's just a neighborhoods map?
We have a map that lists commercial development and residential development. I I can't
But it doesn't have all the neighborhood names.
It has all the neighborhood names and everything on it. We do. Yeah, we have all the, it it just, it's just not part of a master plan. It's a separate map we have in our office that has all that listing. It used to be, but yep.
And I I think we actually do have that as an appendix to our land use plan, Sam. I I'm thinking of the right one.
Yeah, if we went back to the land use element.
All the way.
I think I brought it up, I brought this point up with the land use element that that somewhere in the land use element, there would be, you know, like one of these eleven by seventeens, a neighborhoods names map.
Yeah, we we caught a uh, I'm using the role we hear. Um it's really you guys, you call it the site locations map. It's the very last map there. Now, are, I don't know if all those are all up to date with the latest and greatest names, but um we do have at least a working document that has uh site locations on there.
Thank you. Does that sort of address your say, Sue?
Okay, but I will work with Sam. We'll get rid of the ones that don't have any facilities.
We're talking about physical facilities, then um maybe this is the list where we would add um some of the names that I mentioned earlier, the West Windsor Arts Council, the Skank Farmstead, and then what the mayor mentioned, the Little League uh site.
And what was the second one? I'm sorry, it was the, can you, someone spell that?
S C H E N C K. Off of Southfield.
Okay.
And um if we're looking for enclosed spaces, there is at least one mall that's an enclosed space. I don't know if that could become useful in emergency. Is that something we, or is that opening another can of worms?
I think it's probably opening a can of worms. Moving on through section four.
On uh page uh twenty uh the second paragraph, you have uh the second line, it says the township's man municipal complex, do you mean main municipal complex or just the township's municipal complex? I don't know what man is.
Uh that should be made municipal complex, yes. We have not, did not meet the gender of the municipal complex.
All right, and on the top of twenty one, you you have um as revised directly from the Department of Law and Public Safety. Is that the township Department of Law and Public Safety or is that the New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety or some other department?
Believe that's the uh State Department of Law and Public Safety.
Okay, so then it maybe you should put down New Jersey.
New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety, we can specify. Oh, on the bottom page as well.
Same page at the bottom.
I see that.
On page twenty five, I got something.
At the bottom, so um the last paragraph on page twenty one, three lines up. If you mind, the building also does not contain a dedicated space for any millions of, what is that?
Resilience program, like advantage of the lieutenant of the police department. Resilience program in turn general that looks at the whole health of the officer throughout their career. And it looks to the impacts of um critical incidents, day to day wear and tear, strain on personal life in in FAMRA. And there's a lot of education that goes on for the officer. And there's a dedicated resilience team officer um or local officer within every agency that someone that can be a confidant who talked to the officer to provide them a a quiet space that they can get away. Uh officers face a wide variety of exposures throughout their career, whether it be a violent, sudden death, uh into a child. And the reality is that over time, we learn that if we address those things early at the moment, then it allows the officer tools and coping mechanisms to manage that over time. So resilience has been an effort for the past couple of years. We've been training retirees and one of the requirements is to have an area that is standalone, private, that that officer can work with the resilience team officer that's designated by the
Thank you.
So you're basically talking a private office.
Private space, absolutely.
Private space.
Uh and and the problem
So we're not talking
So our resiliency officer is currently in the same space as the two juvenile. When the juvenile detective keep the talk to somebody related to a case, he has to leave his and his workstation. When when he has to talk to somebody, that person has to come in and ask the other to leave. So it it just face doesn't allow for the function of the organization.
It is a tight squeeze back there. Um and it I and I think we could add a note there to resiliency, maybe something in parentheses, tools and coping mechanisms for mental health, just to
Uh I would
Yes.
Ask for that amplification
Yep.
In the text.
I would agree.
Yeah, uh because it was very helpful. I I wouldn't have thought that at all. Um when you use the word resilience, thank you, officer.
So it's, it sounds like you need X number of private spaces of certain size for either interviews, resiliency.
And we were fortunate enough to have the opportunity to perfect him and spend a lot of time with him to talk to him, talk with us regarding the building. And some of the things that we pointed out, we can't do right now, somebody comes to the police department and they're the victim of a crime. We're discussing their case with them as an initial report in the open lobby of the police department.
No privacy.
And people come to court, walking in the building, or people come to the rec window, walking into the building, and people coming in to drop off their drugs uh at our at our facility or mailbox there. There as well. And sometimes we have multiple people in our lobby that at the same time, there's not spaces to sit and talk with them and and get the details of their case privately. It's um it's something that that officers are dealing with on a regular basis that concerns them. They they bring those concerns up through the chain of tandem. It's not that privacy and we're almost exploiting the victim being burdened.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
They had something on page twenty five. Did he say anything else before page twenty five?
Talk about uh senior citizen use of the uh facilities. Doesn't it make sense to me if someone owns an investment property, doesn't live in the town, they get to actually utilize the senior services of the town?
Um, that was something that was in the two thousand two plan and I I sent that language back over to senior services and yeah, that's the way it's currently set up.
Doesn't seem to make any sense to me. And I understand that it was just repeated, but just in just why would we uh why would we provide that common?
Not a lot of my other towns actually have a uh senior social services center as active as West Windsor, so I don't know if it's common or not necessarily.
I know for the pool, we used to sell day passes to out of town resident, out of town folks, but we stopped doing that, so.
And I can follow up to make sure that's still current practice. Um, just to make sure that it hasn't changed since two thousand and two.
Sent in the second paragraph. The health department also utilize the space in the building that in this building.
Yes.
Yeah, that's that's good. But they use this facility for vaccinations and health clinics and everything else, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, vaccination, yeah.
Well, it's
Temporary bills permanent.
Yeah, I mean, this is the only and before I could set up today, I had to wait till the vaccination clinic left, so yes, they definitely do.
Just like we are.
You start talking about the Mercer County Library and the things that they're requesting, they're talking about parking in the building, that's something West Windsor must have.
We own the property, the county leases it from it, although they haven't updated their lease in years. Um but the county would do the improvements on the township property part of their lease agreement. Yeah, we've contacted them many, many, many times and they just have not gotten back to us.
So they're operating without a lease.
Right. And yet they want more parking.
That they'll pay for to do to service West Windsor residents, yep.
The the lot, the library lot, it's never full.
I I was one, I, Michael, I was wondering the same thing.
I am.
Prior to COVID, it used to be really, really tough to get a spot there, but I think things have changed with their online opportunities to be able to check books out online and so forth. And they spoke with me maybe three years about the parking expansion, so I haven't heard anything since then.
And how many years ago was that, Sue?
About three years ago.
Yeah, okay. Maybe a non-issue.
I don't take my kids there anymore, you know, they're older now, but three years ago I would take them there and and um it was never full, you you know, I got a spot maybe a little bit away, but I don't see the need for parking there. Okay, maybe.
Yeah, and just so the board knows, this wasn't language that was reiterated from the prior plan. I did have a follow up conversation with Blankey and the gentleman's name, but he is the director, I think, of that library branch, and that was one of the recommendations he had. Obviously, this is a planning board document, so you have that option of taking that recommendation out, but that was not a carryover from the older plan. I just want to let you know that was something that was communicated to us.
Is it recently communicated?
Within the past six months or so, yeah.
Oh, really? Okay. I guess I, I guess I just time it right. I just go there when there's nobody.
Yeah, I mean, I've been going there for twenty years. I never had a parking issue.
Again, it is, it's your document, so if you don't think it's a worthwhile recommendation, you can certainly take it out.
Well, I mean, I we used to go hold meetings and stuff there at night and stuff, and I don't remember ever, never getting a spot. Um, question, there are post office. We have part of that post office building where we have the health department and the rec department. The post office used to deliver and there's a big parking lot or reasonably sized parking lot behind the post office. And there really aren't uh postal trucks or anything there. So is that something that there's some possibility of availability for something there?
Availability for the utilization of that land or availability for overflow parking for the library?
Doubt we could take the land, but say to put something or have uh have a parking uh you know, annex there or something like that. If people didn't have a place to park, they could park in the street there, just just some thought.
I know the 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 um health department employees parked back there and the township vehicles they used are parked in the back, so.
We we are using that now.
The employees who work in that building, the rec department also is in that building and they park their personal cars in the back also.
Okay, uh this last item.
And it's segregated from the parking for the postal employees who park to use the post office.
Okay, so it's being utilized.
Correct.
Thank you.
Just to follow back with the library parking, um, does the board want to keep that recommendation in? Does the board want to remove that recommendation?
I'm trying to figure out where we'd put it.
Think maybe you check back with the uh county post, uh county uh library and find out um if they still have that problem. Maybe a recommendation to revisit it uh next year.
I I mean, if it's one, if it's a once every three months thing, do we want to take away wetlands or I mean, you know, it's not good.
And I don't see a problem parking in the municipal complex every now and then and walk the path.
Yeah.
I mean, we do Or the library can expand. They have to get permission from the governing body to do that, so.
But uh Sam, uh refresh my fading memory. We do have a good walking path, paved walking path from municipal complex over to the library, do we not?
We do.
That, so I I mean, I think that addresses your point, uh Jodica. That that we, I mean, we do have, it's not that far, people, come on, I mean, you know, so.
Is there a crosswalk there?
Uh, I don't know.
There is a crosswalk there.
Where where the, yeah, I think there is.
Across Municipal Drive, right behind the building.
So it's leading towards removing this recommendation?
I'd say take it out.
Yeah.
I hit the delete button.
Hate to pick up more space with parking.
Okay, so we're gonna remove that there and and uh under recommendations for the post office, I know we're jumping ahead a little bit. Uh, not post office, I'm sorry, for the library. We're gonna take out that recommendation to expand the parking area under section five point one, but we'll get there. I just want to make sure that we were gonna visit.
I would assume if the library needs to be expanded, which I don't think we've necessarily seen, that possibly a second floor would be would make more sense in terms of looking how much land there is there.
Yeah. Anything else? Moving on to Municipal Public Works, which is page twenty five.
Uh one twenty five, on the third paragraph, it says fire site, firehouse site, the rescue squad, I think you should change the rescue squad to uh emergency services building.
Emergency services building?
Yeah.
Let me check my notes. I actually had that same question.
I know there's one over here at the municipal building.
There's two at the municipal building.
That is on the old work memorial at the back of the municipal building.
Yeah, right.
Wood posted parts bill.
Right.
And then between the municipal building and the post office, Alpha Rec, there's a centennial memorial or centennial monument that the American Legion built um that's in all of it.
There's one more of them.
Yeah.
The veteran's monument, that is next.
That was the world, yeah, the World War Two one.
But this is, this is the duty of the department.
Yeah, so do we want to revise that language to three then?
Well, I think if they're going to maintain, they should maintain three. That one is not very well maintained.
The one driver, uh farm for mouse drivers.
Public Works maintains that.
So we need to add that too.
Well, what, but the ones over here, is that buildings and grounds for the municipal center or is that DPW? Which, which one is it?
DPW handles the, the grass maintenance on the outside of the municipal complex, I see them like on Mondays.
So there's more than two veteran sites, let's just indicate that.
Okay.
Edit it to four.
On uh, on twenty six. Under capital health system.
Oh, right.
You should put down here, it says uh, capital health systems operates a paramedic unit. You should say operates a mobile stroke unit. Or a mobile stroke. Ha, uh, unit slash paramedic unit. Because that's what they, that unit is in the Princeton Junction fired.
Okay, we'll revise that to read, operate the mobile stroke unit and paramedic unit.
Yeah, it's a slash paramedic unit, it's a, it's the only one in the county. Uh, and there are uh, capital health sys, uh, sys, capital health also. Uh, has other paramedic units in the county. But that's the only mobile stroke unit in the county. And it can operate as a mobile stroke unit or as a paramedic unit depending on.
That's important to know, because if you get a stroke, capital health is a. But place to go, they are specifically dedicated to that. And going back a little bit to the monuments, uh, it's not really veterans monument, but there's a nine eleven memorial in the Ron Rogers Arboretum. That is also maintained by. Public Works, so mention it somewhere.
Okay, uh, Westwood, there's four uh veterans monument sites, comma, and the nine eleven monument.
It's a, it's a memorial, there's a.
Memorial?
I mean, nine eleven memorial.
Memorial, not a monument.
Yeah, um, in the Ron Rogers Arboretum.
Yeah, added.
Uh, page twenty seven, if I can go there, did, are we done with twenty six? Sam, you got anything more on twenty six?
Yeah, just, I, I have something on twenty seven.
Okay, oh, since we're, okay, twenty seven, my question is, uh, we mentioned in the final paragraph on page twenty seven. About the possible construction of a third fire station. In uh, the vicinity of Carnegie Center West, do we have, have a dedicated site or anything?
No, I think uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Sam, there's been discussions with Carnegie Center about potentially opening something there, the, the concern from. Uh, fire and emergency services is that they just wouldn't have enough staffing to actually man another facility.
But I'm wondering in terms of planning, do we have a site?
Well, we're working on some rezonings on some properties that haven't come through the planning board yet. And Chief Lynch is involved in that. And one of the structures that would be permitted in this new rezoning. Would be required to allocate space in that building for the township to fit out. Uh, a facility for an ambulance and a crew to be in there, and it would be on the west side of the tracks. That's his concern is to make sure we have some sort of facility on the west side of the tracks in case for whatever reasons. The bridges are out or whatever and they can't get the ambulance across the um, the railroad.
You said ambulance, Sam, but I, I, the paragraph talks about fire station, that fire.
Fire, uh, Chief Lynch and I spoke about this when the university application came in. And what he wanted to do is to work out some sort of mutual agreement with Princeton, because. They would, they're a lot closer to get their equipment to that site than West Windsor would.
So in light of what you've said, Sam, do, do we need to change the content of the paragraph? To go more towards uh ambulance rescue services as opposed to a fire station?
I would, I would keep it in for the fire station. I, I know the major concern is additional crew plus the. Uh, construction of a whole new facility, not to mention to fit it out, so. They're, they're having issues now with a fire truck, let alone a new building.
Thank you.
Um, on, on that page as well, uh, as you pointed to. The, the third paragraph, starting with accordingly. In the middle, i- in the middle of there, you have um. The twin W first aid squad, yeah, I think you ought to eliminate that, it doesn't exist anymore. And you could also put down mobile stroke unit there with the uh paramedic. It's, it's a facility in which it was located is now used for municipal or new services, maybe we need to add. Whatever the new facility is, if it's operating there. Now, I mean, we're in the middle, we're talking about. Oh, in the middle.
Yeah, we would, we would keep the twin W first aid squad there, because it's talking about the study that was conducted in nineteen ninety eight, so that nineteen ninety eight study. Recommended the acquisition of the site for those different facilities, including the twin W first aid squad. But then later in that paragraph, we do say the latter of which has since been disbanded.
Okay, oh, alright.
But we will add mobile stroke and paramedic unit to that paragraph as well.
The study also often stipulate West Windsor Fire Company's location on South Hill Road is appropriate to serve local residents. Take the heat war and an update, and they're also talking in there about the study recommended. The facility be expanded for EMS delivery capability would be beneficial compared to proportion of West Windsor. I'd like to note that there is a property available right next to the fire station, for sale right now. Company has looked into it financially, they can't support it, but it's something the township might want to look into if they want to expand. And. You know, follow up on this uh fire station study. They want to have EMS delivery capabilities, it would give them an opportunity. Get some additional property in order to expand that firehouse. Just a thought, but I think time is of the essence, the property's been on. The market for probably the last six or seven months.
There, Sue, I, I, I know that, that they're looking to purchase the house next door for crew quarters, are you talking about that or are you talking? Okay, yeah. That would be just for crew quarters, it wouldn't be to house the ambulance, or the ambulance would be housed in the existing facility?
I'm just saying, if the township was interested in following up on this study. And looking for a place to expand within that site. The opportunity is there now for the township to explore the purchase.
And you're, you're sitting right next to the right person, because the budget's coming up.
You already talked to me before.
The mayor acknowledges that, I can see that, and he's on tape right now.
I, I had it in the budget, the council took it out.
I heard that.
But I think the opportunity there now to do what this study recommends. Which is very important, especially given the development that's gonna go. Um, on within. The west eastern side of the township with the senior housing, et cetera.
If, if we think that property's gonna be available. Four or five months from now, we can add it to this plan, but. What I don't want to do is add it to the plan and then have the property sold next week, so if it's more of an immediate thing, that's, that's, you know, it's, it's gonna be more.
Well, I think if the town is gonna consider it, I'm, I'm mentioning it to them.
That, that's what I figured, I just wanted, yeah.
On pretty quick.
Exactly.
Want to add it to the plan, but I'm just throwing it out there.
Can I ask the asking price on this, or is that out, out of order?
You want to know the price?
Yeah, maybe, maybe this is not the appropriate format to talk about that.
What was uh researched. But I know it's available, at least it says, it still says for sale, wanted. It's worth thinking about.
Okay, anything more on page twenty seven or, I mean, move to twenty eight and beyond?
Uh, page twenty eight, um, the table number four, David, I'm wondering if it would be worthwhile. To the right of enrollment, to have a column that says capacity. How, how does these enrollments compare to what the capacity of these buildings?
No, the capacity is very fungible number, it's a very.
It's a top one.
Is it really? Okay, I, 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 well, I mean, I know there's, well, yeah, I know there's, you know, building code. Uh, numbers that are not fungible.
No, 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 capacity, it depends on what your class size is, what rooms you can use as classroom. I mean, there's always a full two, three hour debate and we could never decide the exact capacity of a school.
I, I, I just thought maybe that the school board, the school. Board has, you know, knowledge in mind of what the capacity of their structures are.
I mean, they, they can give you a number based on the current usage, but the usage changes, the capacity changes. Like if they change the classroom to something else or.
No, I, I hear your point, nevermind.
One, one thing, just check if Wycoff is still K three, I think they changed it. Just check whether Wycoff is still K three.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Millstone is uh three, four, five, I believe now.
Which one? Millstone is three, four, five?
Yeah.
Okay.
Almost, okay.
Three dash five. Although, I thought I got these off the uh, the website for the.
Yeah, yeah, but I think they moved the third grade from Wycoff to Millstone because of some issues.
They might not have updated the website.
How dare they?
We will, uh, we will take a look at that. I keep on saying we, I will take a look at that and confirm. I'll have Joe take a look at that, especially if.
It sounds important. I want to see one chart.
Any, any, any uh issues with the uh graph on page twenty nine?
I'm gonna add data labels to that, um, on top, just make it easier to read.
Um, yeah, you need um. Need a data label along the um, left hand side, eight thousand eighty five hundred. What is that, is that?
Well, I can, yeah, I can either add the data labels to the figure two or figure three, it's basically showing the same information. Well, eh, kind of stiffer, I'll add data labels to both, we'll make it look nice.
So, eight thousand, that's number of students, what is that?
Eight thousand, yeah, so on figure two, the eight thousand would be total number of students.
Okay.
And then. Um, figure three breaks that down from elementary, upper elementary, middle school and high school.
Okay.
Is it possible, um, since figure three has a whole bunch of different bars that are kind of hard to. Um, compare one to the other, because they're all on different levels. Is it possible to put um lighter line? On the above figure there for figure two? In other words, that's a, this is a summary of the enrollment trends, so is it possible to do it by grade on that chart?
Is it impossible to what? I'm sorry.
To do it by grade on that chart, so we could actually see the relationship.
I don't know if the information that was broken down to me provided it by grade.
It doesn't need to be by grade, I meant by school, like you have on the bottom.
Oh, by school.
We have upper elementary, um, uh, elementary, middle school, high school, just add four more lines to the line, bar, the line chart.
Oh, add, add those lines to the line chart?
Yeah.
For, okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you're showing, you're trying to show the same data two different ways, essentially.
Yep, yeah, we can do that.
You can, can you, you can actually combine these two and just overlay the line graph on top of the book, um, the bar charts?
You are maximizing my uh knowledge of Microsoft Word, but I will try to give that a shot, or I.
You know, I, I think, I think we better off having a separate day of truth. I, I think it'll be pretty unclear if you tried to superimpose one above the other.
Yeah, well, what I can do is uh maybe expand those out so that they actually occupy a whole page too.
David, so the district enrollment has been going down?
District enrollment is going down, this was a fascinating conversation I had with Dr. Aderhold. And um, he kind of equates it to two things, one was. Overarching changes that happened with immigration policy at the federal level over the past several years. The district, especially Plainsboro, has a very large. Immigrant population in the school district. And there was a lot more restrictions that were placed on federal policy with immigration over the past couple of years, that. He, his hypothesis was impacted enrollment there. Um, same thing with COVID nineteen and, and, and same thing with just the aging of the population in general and uh reduction of. You know, average household size, so there's a number of factors, but it was very surprising that it reduced that amount. Uh, or at least I was surprised. No, I don't think he really brought up homeschooling that much, no.
But I, I think a lot of parents did pull kids out of public school, went to either private school or. Home school for that, and then because the international travel was closed, so if your visa expired, you went to in. India or China or wherever, you couldn't come back.
Yeah, and that's another, that's another great point, um, especially with the COVID nineteen pandemic, it was tougher to get some of those. Documents to, you know, be over here, so I, I, I think that reduced as well.
Um, Dave, on page twenty eight, your table four. Millstone River is a three, five school.
Yep, we will, yeah, we'll correct that.
Is, is there some way to know how many students there are in West Windsor that are going to private school?
Did you what? Could you say that again?
That are going to private school, um, for one, where they're potential students.
And that's a, that's a tough one, because we would have to. I can check with the boards if they have any estimates.
The school has that, it's.
You think?
Has that information?
Yeah, I mean, they, the school does have information about how many go to charter school, because they have to pay them. Pay the charter school, so they definitely have data of how many go to charter school.
Okay, I, I can shoot Dr. Aderhold an email, see what he got, see what he has.
Yeah, it, it would be interesting to know whether we have.
Private school also, because they're supposed to provide busing, even if you go to private school, so they should have that data.
Okay, interesting, I will follow up.
Or if you take your child out, you probably have to say that you're sending them to school, so.
You, I, my daughter went to private school, or middle school, and we had to apply and tell them. She's not gonna be going here, she'll be going to private.
Yeah, otherwise there's a truancy issue if you just take your kid and don't send them.
Right, all of a sudden, the kid doesn't go on to the next school, something's wrong. She went to chief and now she goes to.
Anything else with uh section four point five with schools?
Um, on the page thirty one. We've had, uh, on many occasions before this board, we've had the, the school board. Uh, the school district present courtesy visits to, for their facility improvements. Um, and some of those, and those, many of those improvements are listed here, except. Um, the expansion of Morris Hawk School, that's not even mentioned as a bullet point.
Hmm, yeah.
Morris Hawk Elementary School? That, it went through an expansion?
Thirty one thousand four hundred square feet.
I mean, you mentioned the expansions at other schools that have been before us, uh, like uh, High School South. Um, and uh, uh, you know, Village, I'm, I'm sorry, the, the other ones. Community, yeah.
Okay, we'll add a bullet point for Morris Hawk with the expansion.
Okay, page thirty two, anything, House of Worship?
A lot of this is more informational, so.
Yes, a question, um, most of them have generated type NA. But under the Muslim Center of Greater Princeton, generated type. But under the Muslim Center of Greater Princeton, generated type is blank.
So, let me use the page thirty two as an example. So, um, Church of Saint David the King got back to us and told us that they do not have a generator. Therefore, the generator type would be not applicable.
Okay.
Uh, congregation at the time, on the other hand, did not necessarily give us a response back, which is why those dashes are there. So that's why it's left blank.
So blank means they didn't get back to you.
Yep, so we have a little footnote on the bottom page thirty two, um, dash, 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 to note no response.
Okay.
And to the left, it says generator no, and then it would say not applicable as far as the type. So if it says no, I guess that's an N.
Exactly, yeah, it's not applicable.
If you have the solar panels, you're going to add that there?
Uh, this was more for if they had a new generator for emergency situations. So, uh, solar panels, that documentation might be more relevant if this was a sustainability plan element or the conservation plan element for a community facilities element. I don't know if you necessarily document the solar panels.
They would need to have a battery backup type system to be able to run the solar during the, um, during an outage.
Yeah, there's nothing at four point six. Four point seven, we discussed that we will amend this section to remove those associations that don't have any facilities.
Like, like my homeowners.
Which one are yours?
Grove is no.
All right, you're gonna be out of the plan.
That's too bad.
Yeah, and David and Sam, uh, on page thirty seven, they list La Park one and La Park two. The, the only La Park I'm familiar with is basically from the old Maneli tract. It was subdivided off at the intersection and it said, there was, you had that commercial development with the affordable units above, at the intersection basically of, um, Old Bear Brook Road and Bear Brook, and Bear Brook Road. Um, and that was called La Park.
It's like park, P A R C. La Park is a single family home development on North Post Road. And it runs along Village Road and it's a cluster subdivision. And they have a clubhouse and they have tennis courts. I think they have a swimming pool. And La Park two is over on Village Road West in Dutchneck.
Okay.
Which is why we have neighborhoods map.
It is split by the, uh, it's, it's split by the, the.
High tension power.
Hey, hey, David, um, since it's only going to be listing, um, associations that have physical, um, facilities, maybe that needs to be added somewhere in, in the, either heading footnote or.
In the introductory paragraph, uh, let me, that's a good point. So we're gonna make a little note in that paragraph that says that, um,
Sure.
It only includes associations with.
Because then the next time we meet, someone will say, how come my homeowners association is not here?
Exactly.
We just keep the list, uh, uh, some of the homeowners associations have architectural review committees that have signed off on any exterior work, client, one of their homeowners is doing. But, um, a lot of them don't even have those regulations anymore.
We used to keep them.
We still have a list of, of, of the homeless. That's what we went off. That's the list that's in here, whether they have structures or not. It's just for, um, contacting the residents in that civic group or homelessness associations.
I guess a monument sign doesn't count as a facility, right?
Had to be a heck of a monument sign.
Well, the, the historical society monument signs are expensive and, and pretty, but not ours.
It's nice, but it's, it's relatively new, but it can't play tennis on it.
Play tennis against it, but not on it.
Did you get one of those new signs?
So as I mentioned, four point seven will remove those that don't have facilities and we'll add a note. That's a, that's a important note. Section four point eight gasoline service stations.
Isn't there a Wawa, uh, gas station coming on Route one somewhere?
Page forty one, it's on page forty one.
Yep, approved, not constructed.
Apologize.
No, no, no.
The last one.
I think that was the zoning board, right?
Your zoning board took care of that.
Yep, and there's another two that haven't come in yet. So both of them are quick checks.
But they are listed, but they are listed in the document.
Quick checks they have proposed.
Yeah.
When you have generator type, I'm not sure what temporary means, um, would it make more sense rather than to put the brand name to put whether it was, uh, gas powered or, you know, gasoline powered, gas powered, diesel powered, um, natural gas?
Okay, we'll check with the building department. We can follow up with the building department and I, I think Sam had mentioned that the building department would probably have the information on what type of actual generator it is.
I mean, that's just more useful to know whether or not they have onsite fuel or whether or not they're.
No, you'd want to know whether it's standby. So in other words, natural gas power goes out automatically goes on versus roll out the, you know, the gasoline powered.
Well, our code does require it to be onsite and tied to natural gas if it's available. Wawa is the only one who won't do that. Their corporate policy is, is they contract out with portable generators to be brought to the site.
Yep. So if there's an emergency, they'll have a delivery of a generator onsite.
It's in the middle of the. Yeah, okay.
They will have a backup generator to power that generator before it gets delivered to the site.
This board will get a Wawa application very shortly. The zoning board caved in and let them have that portable one.
The zoning board's not getting it?
No, we rezone the property, so it's coming to planning.
If the, um, last sentence there says, with the emergency preparedness, it's recommended the township require gas service, gasoline service station to install generators. Do we need to put that in our ordinances?
Yeah, and we started doing that for. We've started doing that actually for, um, uh, some of the recent rezonings that we've done, B two A, for example.
It's in there then.
If for the B two A, yes, we'll eventually have to go back to some of our other zoning districts where gas stations are allowed and amend the ordinance to do so.
Can we have a blank?
And the B two also we updated because we changed those requirements. So the B two and the B two A have that in there that they have to have that.
Is there any reason we can't have one blanket ordinance saying if you put a gas station in West Windsor?
It's better to put it in the zoning districts where the specific uses are because when you're looking in those use requirements or those conditional requirements, it's easy to find in those zoning districts. To have it just floating out there is going to, it's going to be hard to find.
Yeah, and, and it's interesting, if you have them in the zoning district, and they don't want to do it, or they want to do some variation in that, they need a variance. If it's in the, in the site plan, a subdivision ordinance, it's a waiver. And that's a difference between a waiver and a variance. It's where it's located in the code.
Yes, exactly, yes.
But that kind of finalizes what you have for community facilities.
Uh, except for the recommend.
Right, except for the recommendation.
Yes.
If, um, I'm thinking in terms of, I think a funeral home is a community facility. Is it not?
Yeah.
It's not specifically defined by the municipal land use law, but there is no definition of community facility in the MLUL, so.
So if we wanted to consider a funeral home in West Windsor, which I've brought up before.
You have.
Yes, I remember that, that's discussion.
Included in this element.
I, I don't know what you would put in here for, I mean, the community facilities where people could gather in times of emergencies or something. I mean, it's not as though people could go there to charge their phones or there's an emergency generator for them to, you know, whatever. I don't see how it would fit in with the community.
Same, the way this is, the, the way this is, um, uh, addressed, the community facilities are very, very broad.
So what else can we put in if we're going to start doing that that we're excluding?
I don't know.
It's to me.
I think it's a good idea, though.
Real, ideally, it would be a land use recommendation, a land use plan.
We've done that.
Yeah.
And it's been done.
And that was.
Brought up then and we said we would talk about it later.
And as I said, you're sitting next to the right person.
Yeah, I tried, I tried very hard and that's, that Jean wanted that too.
I remember, yes, I remember that discussion.
At part, I'm not joking. I did try and somebody turned it down.
Well, what can we do?
But, but I like, I like where Sue's going with this, you know, or is there anything that we haven't, have not addressed in this greater umbrella of community facilities? I mean, I'm, I think, example, you know, we do have recreational facilities that are, in a sense, community facilities, yet we, they're addressed in another element of, of our planning.
Open space and recreation plan.
Yes. So, but, but I do, I like where Sue's question is going in the broader sense, Sue. You know, are there, is there, are there items that we haven't covered in here?
Well, if you're gonna, it's gonna go into privately owned items like that, supermarkets would be.
Or, or market fair. I mean, you could even say that's a community gathering spot.
Sources of, of local food. Um, you know, where local food is warehouse and then, and then you get into farms too, but that's a whole different, different thing. But if you want to get into what would be needed to sustain us even, which is what I think this is about, then you would want to go for what kind of medical facilities do we have here, urgent cares, doctors' offices, and then you would get into, um, supermarkets and, and, and places for food and, you know, some, but the basics of food, medicine. Um, you know, we have the transportation and the, and the, um, gasoline, uh, supply. So if, I don't, I don't know where that stuff would go, but that is part of keeping everybody alive for five days or whatever it is if, if there was some emergency.
Is our plan typically what you see in other communities that you do?
Uh, in other communities that we've done before, um, I think we've done a community facilities plan for Montville, typically, typically, I would say they're a little bit more narrow focused. Um, so you're really looking at, um, you know, your libraries, you're looking at your, um, municipal buildings, your, you know, fire department, police station, really your brick and mortar, what you would consider to be a traditional community facility. Um, this one, we did expand that a little bit to include houses of worship, um, which is not unusual. You can see houses of worship in other community facilities as well. Um, and as also with the HOAs and the neighborhood associations for that idea of having localized emergency preparedness. So.
Gathering place.
Yes, gathering places. So the, this is a little bit more of an expanded community facilities plan that I've seen in the past. Typically, the other ones are a little bit more brick and mortar and uh, narrow focused.
Well, David, uh, Sam asked, in addition to funeral homes, what else would you suggest? What about urgent care facilities?
I haven't seen it in the past. Uh, I have seen, you know, hospitals included in a community facilities plan, um, identification of those. We can certainly add a section regarding urgent care, but it's not something I've seen before in a community.
And, and we have more urgent cares coming in all the time. I mean, there's three more proposed that this board will be hearing. So, I mean, I think it's more of a gathering place is kind of where we're trying to, to limit it to, a gathering place where folks can go where there's, you know, for emergency situations.
But, yes, Sam, I don't consider police department or the fire, fire rescue as gathering spots in your depth.
Oh, yeah, you, you, you most definitely can. I mean, if there's a hurricane or something, you're with the American Red Cross. They could put up cots or something in there.
As a gathering spot for, uh, as a place of refuge, gathering spot as a place of shelter.
How, how daycare center, can you add them?
I, I'm sorry?
Daycare centers.
You said mentioning daycare centers.
Yeah, I know, I'm. I mean.
Again, I, I think we're getting a little bit too broad.
Those are, those are private facilities. I don't, I don't, you know.
Well, so, so gasoline service stations, I, which I think it's kind of strange having actually them in plan.
Well, we can make it less. We can pull gasoline service stations if you don't think it's.
Gasoline, I mean, you, you can't miss it if you're driving.
The only reason that was put in there was me asking Dave to do that because I know when we've had the hurricanes and power was out, we wanted to make sure we could direct people to where you could get gas because those facilities have generators that the gas is still being pumped out.
Yeah.
It wouldn't be a gathering place, right? Maybe a.
No.
Broad sense, no, but for, for that in particular, I thought it was important to have it in because of the generator opportunities and we, folks could be directed to go to those gas stations.
Get gasoline because sometimes if the station doesn't have power, unless they have a generator, you can't pump the gas.
Right, right.
But it wouldn't be gathering because they don't have the indoor facility to shelter you.
And, and most of the gasoline filling stations also have convenience stores and so forth that are associated with it.
Yeah.
So I, I think we're, with what you're saying, Steve, we're expanding the definition of community facilities, expanding it so that it's beyond just the idea alone of gathering place. We're thinking of, of the whole, of places that, places in the township that are able to help and respond in a time of emergency, under the bigger umbrella of community facilities.
We're just touching on it because Chief Lynch has a whole plan that he's working on and also we're working, and I think the police are too with the county because they have a, um, a county emergency management plan too that lists locations of facilities county wise. I know we even had, had to, um, locate all the bridges and everything and every kind of, um, facility, like if a bridge went out, then the bridge would have to be numbered, emergency service would have to know that that road's closed because that bridge is out. So it's a very detailed plan that the county and the town are putting together outside of the community facilities plan element.
So outside, outside of the community facilities element, do these emergency considerations fit into any other element of the master plan?
None that I'm aware of.
Um, the closest I can think of is, we discussed this a little bit earlier, is that the municipal land use law was amended to come up with a climate resiliency plan. So any new land use plan that's adopted in New Jersey from, I think about six months back or so, any new land use plan that's adopted in New Jersey will have to include a climate vulnerability assessment. I can get the exact language from the municipal land use law, but it's basically identifying what the climate vulnerabilities are in a community and how you can address those. It is relatively newer, so I haven't seen any of those necessarily adopted yet. But that would be, I think, the closest you could probably get to something like that.
I think, I think those, um, that was being discussed at the last league meeting, so it was probably somewhere around then.
We discussed it where?
At the, last November at the league.
Oh, yes, yeah, I'm sure it was probably discussed there.
Yeah, and I think they said that what was happening was that a lot of towns are resisting adopting new land use laws because they didn't really know what to do with that. So you, so I'm not sure how long it's going to take.
Exactly, yeah.
Before, yeah, they, they said there was actually a whole big issue with the backlog that people had to adopt new land use plans and they were and, and, uh, you know, there were some issues because, because of not knowing what to do with that.
The state came out with a website that provides guidance. Um, what I had originally wanted to do with my office was go through that website and provide a summary of that. And I eventually gave up halfway through because it was just too much information. So hopefully the state, I don't know if they will, but hopefully the state will come out with some sort of template or some sort of model plan that municipalities can base it off of because otherwise we're all kind of operating in the dark. And they're supposed to be funding and available, no, no pun intended.
In light of everything we've been talking about.
Exactly.
On page forty six, you have houses of worship under, uh, homeowners associations. You might want to replace it with homeowners association.
So I'm sorry, under, uh, five point five and five point six. Oh, I see what you're saying. Yep, I see that. We'll correct that.
Is that a we or an I?
Royal we. We makes it sound like I actually have influence in my firm. Um, I is more honest.
We have, if you look at five point seven, the gasoline. We have, if you look at 5.7, the gasoline stations are houses of worship.
Oh, boy. Okay. Yeah.
It was the end of the document. David was tired.
Oh, and I'd be remiss if I did not include an additional uh, recommendation for the police department, which was in the text, but not included in his punch list, which was to have, uh, two more dispatchers.
And Dave, is it true that the police are the ones who sat down with you the longest to give you the most information out of anyone you spoke with?
Uh, that is correct. Yes. Invited me in.
I think it was three of them. They provided lunch and drinks and everything.
Well, let's not, let's not get carried away here.
It was, it was part of her plea bargain.
I believe I was offered coffee, but I had, uh, I had about two cups on the way down, so I didn't need any additional.
You offered coffee and one phone call.
So.
And no ba, and no bathroom break until you could.
So at this point, you know, having gone through the document, what, what are the next steps or what do we need to do tonight in regards to the document?
I, I don't think this board needs to do anything tonight. So I have a list of recommendations, other things that we're going to follow up on edits. What we'll do is that we will prepare a revised version of this document, actually probably two versions, one, which will be a redline version. So the board can see what those changes are as well as a, a, a non-redline version. Um, I don't know if these changes are going to be so substantial that we need another work session. I'll leave that up to the board.
I'm, I'm thinking that provide those two documents, but the next meeting, meeting we'll have will notice for a public hearing and actual adoption. And I'm thinking maybe sometime end of October, beginning of November, um, and I'll talk with Dave about that because there's noticing requirements that have to be done well in advance.
And if there's minor changes that we need to make to the document, we can still do it and adopt it at that same time. But I, I think we have the flavor of what we need for this document moving forward.
And I know Simon always asks me this, but we're looking at early November for the municipal building to be open. So we would start having our meetings probably just before Thanksgiving over at the municipal building.
Um, is there anything else on this? So I'll, um, I'll open it to the public to make any comments on this if they want. Okay. CNN, CNN none. I will then ask for public comments on non-agenda items. Please start your lining up here. So, uh, can I have a motion to close the public, public hearing?
Still moved. Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Right.
Next meeting, September 28th.
So at, uh, at 10, you know, almost 10:40, I, now I'm journeying. Thank you. Thank you.